This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 30th, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 10th, 2020. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President Metu Brown?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and welcome, everyone, to our November 23rd, 2021 Town Council meeting. We are now hosting our conference agenda, and I'm going to turn it over first to my council colleague Castellino, as she will be doing a recognition this evening.
Thank you very much, Council President. Good evening, West Orange. So tonight, I am very excited. We have special guests this evening. In the West Orange PAL, we are going to be honoring the 10-year fall baseball team, the Mustangs. We always love to bring in our youth groups in to council chambers. Of course, we're on a Zoom meeting, so we didn't want to pass by this special recognition of a championship that they had won this fall. Our young athletes have worked really, really hard for their accomplishments, and tonight we have their coach with us, and we also have our Board of Ed member Cheryl Merklinger, who also serves as a board member for the West Orange PAL. For those who you have not got a chance to have your child play with on a PAL team, or watch a game, or know about the organization, the PAL has been existence for almost 60 years here in the township, serving youth sports. And not only do they teach our young athletes how to play the skills of playing football, cheerleading, and traveling baseball, they're also about team spirit, sportsmanship, and community service. So a lot of great qualities that they instill in our young athletes. So with further ado, I'm going to have Ms. Merklinger introduce our coaches that are here this evening, talk a little bit about the team, and then I will read the citation from our Township Council. Thank you, our Board of Ed member.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino, and thank you to the full Town Council for welcoming our PAL team this evening, as well as our coaches, Zach Capola, Jeff Scott, and Chris Bola. It was a great season. We were excited for the team, but we also want to recognize and thank the township for turfing Degnan Field. Our 10-year team moved up to 50-70, and so they had the opportunity to use the new turf fields, and really appreciate it being able to not get rained out, and being able to play all their games at home games at Degnan, working with Mountain Top and the RAP to share the field and the facility. So it was just a great experience this fall season for all of our teams. But we're really excited for our 10-year team. Like Councilwoman Castellino mentioned, they did win their division in USABL. It's the most competitive baseball league in the state of New Jersey, so we're very fortunate to be a part of that. And so I will just turn it over to the head coach, Zach Capola, to talk a little bit about the team, the last game, which was really exciting. I don't want to take away his thunder of telling what occurred. So I'll just turn it over to Zach.
Thanks, Cheryl. Thanks, Council, for having us. You know, this team that we had this fall was absolutely great. We won, obviously. What this team had, though, which a lot of winning teams do have, is heart. We also, every kid wanted every kid wanted to get better. There was no, you know, making fun of anyone. Someone made a bad play or struck out, they were always there to pick each other up and tell them, hey, make the next play. During the final game, though, it was a great game. We won 5-4 in a walk-off in the bottom of the sixth. So that was always, that's a great thing. I want to give a special shout-out to the 10 kids that were on my team. They were Brayden Foley, Bryson Skolnick, Eli Witzig, Jamison Castle, Jonah Scott, Joshua Pineda, Lucas Bola, Mikey Diaz, Nate Gru, and Nick Ward. Those are the 10. We had nine that day, but you could see there is a picture of the missing 10 that was there, and when every kid leaving the dugout or got a hit, they always, they gave him a high-five. So that was fun. Also, would like to give a special shout-out to the two high school varsity baseball players that also helped out, Matt Bove and Chance Garjulo, who helped out with our pitchers and catchers during the fall season, which helped out tremendously. So thank you to all them, and my two assistant coaches as well.
Thank you, Coach. That was a great shot. Always so excited. Really disappointed. We usually do our fist bump with the, with the young athletes, so I hope they get a chance if they're not on the call today. They, hopefully, they will see this. So great job to all of you. You work so hard. You spend a lot of time. I can, I know your dedication as part of the PAL program, and being a sports mom with, with my kids, and it's a lot of time. And congratulations as well to the parents, because it's a lot of driving as well, especially when you're a traveling team. But it's such a great experience. It's such a great opportunity for our young athletes as they grow and develop. And what's great about the PALS, one of our feeder programs that feeds right into West Orange High School and for future successes there up at the high school. We look forward to seeing you as years to come, and we're so glad that you're able to get that opportunity to play on the Big Diamond. So let me read the citation from my colleagues and myself. "The West Orange Township Council recognizes the West Orange PAL Mustangs 10-year fall baseball team. The West Orange Township Council is proud to recognize the West Orange PAL Mustangs 10-year travel baseball team for the 2021 USABL National Central Division Fall Baseball Championship." And as the coach mentioned, all the, the young team players, I'll mention them again, Brayden Foley, Bryson Skolnick, Eli Witzig, Jamison Castle, Jonah Scott, Joshua Pineda, Lucas Bola, Michael Diaz, Nathan Grau, and Nick Ward, along with their dedicated head coach, congratulations, Coach Zach Capola, and his assistants, Coach Jeff Scott and Coach Christopher Bola. "The team represented West Orange with a record of seven wins, three losses, having secured a first-round bye on Sunday, November 6. The 10-year team played with their dedication hearts to take a 3-2 walk-off win and untamed gold in the bottom of the sixth inning. They were recognized in the competitive USABL Central Northwest Division as a 10-year 50-70 Division Champions. The West Orange Township Council is proud to recognize and congratulate the Mustangs on their excellent sportsmanship and wishes them continued success in the future." So congratulations again to the team and to the coaches and to all involved, and we look forward to having you come back, maybe next time in person. So everyone stay well, stay safe. And before we have you sign off, I have to give a special thank you to Cheryl Merklinger for her service. She'll be ending her term in next month, and we're sorry to see you go on the, on the school board. I know it's, it's a break that you were, it was bittersweet for you to move on, but I know your son's gonna be very, very, very busy with himself, traveling as a young athlete, going off to college. So thank you for all your time, your dedication. You served on the town, on the Board of Ed to the liaison, and I have to tell you, there have been many meetings and many phone calls with recreation and the athletic director and coaches. Thank you to Cheryl for all of her support in, with scheduling conflicts, because there's usually, with all that activity, a buzz on West Orange High School campus, there's always a scheduling conflict, and she's been instrumental in making, streamlining that and making it very smooth. So thank you, Cheryl. You, you'll be very, very well missed.
Thank you.
Good luck as you move forward. And I know you're not going anywhere, anywhere, because you're still very involved with the PAL as a board member and as one of our treasure cheerleader coaches, as you coached our youth teams to go off and prepare them for West Orange High School. So thank you so much for all you do for a township.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino, for bringing this to the council. Certainly do want to extend our congratulations to the champs. That's really exciting. It's always great to hear how much of yourselves you help grow when you challenge yourselves to be the best, and very proud of you all. And to the coaches and the parents for your dedication and your commitment, thank you for being there to support our, our young athletes. So good luck and stay safe. At this time, we are going to ask, Councilman Rutherford is going to read also a proclamation, so I will give the floor to Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. Council colleagues, unfortunately, we lost a young, vibrant member of our West Orange community. I have a resolution of respect. I'd like to read into the record, and it reads as follows, "In loving memory of Ayanna E. Williams, though your days among us were too brief, and our grief at your loss is never-ending, we draw comfort from the knowledge that you have found safe refuge in the Lord and in our hearts, where no darkness or pain can touch you now. We bless you with love, light, and our gratitude. Whereas Ayanna Williams was born in Boston, Massachusetts, on March 29, 1973, the youngest of three children to parents Stephen L. Williams and Patricia A. Williams, Ayanna moved to East Orange, New Jersey in 1976. She attended Brookdale Christian School in Bloomfield before moving to South Orange to attend South Orange Middle School and Columbia High School. Ayanna graduated cum laude from Howard University School of Communications in 1996. Whereas after graduation, Ayanna joined Universal Records as a publicity creative services assistant, quickly moving up the ranks as an advertising coordinator, and finally becoming a manager within the marketing department. After a few years, Ayanna would leave Universal and become a project manager within the marketing department at Jive Records before joining the family's housecleaning business as the office manager. At the time of her death, she was a partner manager of operations. Whereas Ayanna moved to West Orange not only for the great schools, but her youngest daughter Anaya currently attends Liberty Middle School. She also moved for the natural beauty the township offers. She enjoyed taking in the views at Eagle Rock Reservation with her family, and stopping by Fortissimo for pizza. Whereas Ayanna Williams, 48, passed from this life unexpectedly on November 17, 2021. Whereas Ayanna's love of life and her generous spirit will be missed by all who knew her, but most especially by her two children, Nakaya Masai Johnson and Anaya Patricia Williams Burrows, also her sister Kalida A. Lewis and her brother Stephen L. Williams. She also leaves behind two nieces and three nephews in addition to numerous cousins, as well as a host of other relatives and friends. Whereas the family and acquaintances of Ayanna are deeply saddened at her sudden departure, as are all who were touched by her generous spirit and kindnesses. And whereas Ayanna was a giving, caring person who actively participated in several charitable activities, including volunteering with the National Suicide Prevention Foundation, the Breast Cancer Foundation, and the Believe in Newark Foundation, and her legacy of faith and service will continue to inspire loved ones and everyone she knew. Now therefore be it resolved that the Township Council, the Township of West Orange, extends our heartfelt condolences to the family and friends of Ayanna E. Williams. Now therefore be it further resolved that we bow to a greater will than our own, and rest in the knowledge that one day we will be united again in joy and in the fullness of God's mercy. Thank you, Council President, for allowing me to read this into the record. She was certainly a special person and friend. And given that Columbia has lost some really important, everyone's important, but some well-known alumni this year, including David Durkin, I thought it would be appropriate to honor her tonight. So thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, and condolences to the family. I can't imagine their sadness, and really thoughtful of you, Councilman Rutherford. Thank you. I will now move on to council liaisons. Councilwoman Castellino?
Okay.
Council President?
Sorry to hear about that. Am I?
I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt, but there was supposed to be a discussion about the 2022 council meeting dates.
Oh, yes. I am so sorry. Let's hear that first. Did everyone, and that's what I get for not printing out the updated conference agenda, my apologies. Did my council colleagues all have time to review the dates?
I did. Council President, I wanted to say that I did, and I didn't see any conflicts on there, and very respectful of the holidays, and it seemed to all work out.
Yes, I felt the same. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree, Council President. I did not see any conflicts.
Good. Councilwoman Castellino, Councilman Rutherford, we're all good?
Yeah, great job, Madam Clerk.
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Well, after 12 years, I finally remembered to put both elections down on the calendar.
You did that.
Yeah. It's like the very first thing I did.
We're looking for discrepancies. So look, if we found none, then you're doing your job.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you to my colleagues, and thank you, Madam Clerk, for sharing that with us as well. Council liaisons, Councilwoman Castellino?
Okay. Hope you all can indulge me this evening on quite, quite a few things. We have a lot of events coming up with the holiday season among us. A lot of exciting things starting on Sunday. And check the recreation websites, check the township website for times, but Santa Claus is coming to town starting this Sunday. He will be on a firetruck practicing and his run. So he'll be stopping at the various schools. I know Dr. Cascone had a flyer that went out to the school. So just parents, if you're listening in, the firetruck will be going to various elementary schools this Sunday, and Santa will be stopping by to see the children in the neighborhood. So please look for the schedule. It's always a very exciting, happy event, and glad that it's, it's back this year. On Monday, will be our Township menorah lighting at 4:00 PM in front of Township Hall. So we'll be recognizing the, the Festival of Lights for Hanukkah. So I hope everyone is available to come. It's always a lovely ceremony, and it starts at 4:00 PM. And then the following week, on the 4th, December 4th, Saturday, December 4th, Madam Moderator, do you have that flyer to show everyone? So we hope everyone could come out to our Holiday Open House, starting with breakfast with Santa at Washington School from 9:00 to 1:00. We were gonna, we're gonna have breakfast in the, here we go, holiday character breakfast. There'll be, Santa will have his helpers on hand in Washington School Cafeteria, and then in the gym, there'll be all social distancing, everything will be safe, and Santa will be there to take pictures with the children. And Santa does have his vaccination and, and his helper. So we're looking forward to that. And there will be trolley rides hosted by my council colleagues and the mayor. So I hope all of you had signed up and got in touch with Ms. Brill, my colleagues, for your time slot if, to host a trolley. It's always a nice time. And we have two trolleys again this year. Go to the downtown website. One trolley will be making its way up to Eagle Rock Reservation, and Joe Fagan will meet the group there to give a historical tour and some much great information about the reservation. As we all know, the 9/11 memorial is up there. And then you could take, or you could take the trolley tour ride or both to Llewellyn Park. And we usually have someone from the park services to assist us on the trolley as well. So it's, hopefully, it'll be a beautiful day, beautiful weather, and we'll be cleaning the jetties and the trolleys in between and trying to make everything safe for our residents as we enjoy the holiday, the holidays this year. In regards to some other news downtown, if all of you have seen some work in the Edison Lofts Building, the commercial spaces are starting to be full. I had spoken with John Huff, the manager there, and he's also one of our, he's actually my appointment to the downtown board, and we're grateful to him. He is on the design committee as well. So he's, he's really been very helpful with our, our chairman. And, but BK Lobster is coming to the Edison Lofts, and they are going to have an outside space as well, and indoor dining. So it'll be a really lovely new restaurant downtown. So we're looking forward to that. Golden Age Health and Pharmacy, and sports medicine, physical therapy. And there, there's some more, but those are the ones that he can announce. Those are signed leases. So we're excited that the commercial spaces are filling up, as well as 98% capacity there. So we're very happy to hear that report. As I said, our design team is very busy now that, you know, COVID. We have a pack, we have a few volunteers that are going to be visiting our, our storefronts and helping them with design. And we look forward to some more news on that within the near future. So with that, also, on the Saturday of the open house, the West Orange Friends of the Library will be having their annual book sale back in action. So there also will be a Build a Bear at 2:00 PM for the parents to sign up. So you go Build a Bear, and you need some holiday books. The, the library will be having their book sale that day. I'll be meeting with the Board of Education next week, a wrap-up meeting in between. I know, I usually don't report, but I've been staying in constant contact with, between Mr. Keough and, as I mentioned earlier, with Ms. Merklinger and superintendent with the, you know, with the recreation use of our fields, because as you know, we, you know, we combine our efforts, everything that goes on at West Orange High School. So we look forward to see what other needs the school district may have from the township, and I'll report back after next week. And last but not least, the West Orange Public Relations Commission, my report there, they've been very active. I've been assisting with downtown with, we're hoping to launch our downtown, I mean, our townwide mobile app. It's been a monumental task, gathering up the information to upload the app, and the PR Commission has been tasked with going to our restaurant owners to get all their information. So we appreciate all their support, all their volunteer time, and we hope to have a test launch come January. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome, and thank you for all of the great information. Councilwoman McCartney, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to start with the congratulations to Zach and the volunteer coaches at PAL. That was great news to start our meeting. And to also say God bless Ayanna's family. Hopefully, they can find comfort in her rich and full life that she did have. The West Orange Arts Council will have their holiday gift and gallery open on weekends from 12:00 to 4:00. They have vendors there for handmade crafts, and the gallery will be open. So everyone is invited to go to 551 Valley Road to see some of the beautiful crafts and handmade items that are there for the holidays. The West Orange Environmental Commission, we were supposed to meet tomorrow evening, but being the night before Thanksgiving, we have canceled that meeting. But I did want to say that I was pleased, or we, members of the Environmental Commission were pleased to see the ordinance on for first reading for the electric charging stations, make-ready ordinance, and also for the stormwater management ordinance that appears on tonight's agenda. I have to really thank all of our residents who have been donating toys to the, the trailer that has been placed up at the environmental center. There's a 20-foot trailer over there trying to keep plastic toys out of landfills. The West Orange Environmental Commission partnered a few years back with Second Chance Toys. Second Chance Toys is affiliated with 12 charitable organizations. So all the toys that our residents have donated move on to other facilities. And last Sunday, thanks to many, a crew of volunteers to help sort and disinfect the toys. We have thousands of toys stored away for, for the toys to be donated. So I thank everyone for doing that. Just like a PSA announcement would be that if you are going to donate toys, please keep everything together to make it easier for us to sort and, and have the, have the toys reused. Some of the people that came, I just wanted to just let everyone know that there is a new anti-litter campaign, W O Citizens Against Litter. This is just a volunteer organizations, and they're already up to their, only started two weeks ago, and they're already preparing for this weekend to do a neighborhood cleanup. It was organized by Dan Cunningham, Mikey Burke, and they have a trustee crew of resident volunteers, and they tackle various neighborhoods on Saturday more, Sunday mornings. Takes less than an hour, and they have blocks cleaned up. So that's going very well. I think that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilman Rutherford?
Thank you, Council President. In the interest of time, I will just make a couple of comments. One, I was able to attend last week the League of Municipalities. We were able to attend some, well, I was able to attend some workshops that I think are going to be very helpful, especially with regard to cannabis in town, and how we move forward as a township to both protect our residents and figure out how we will work with the industry. But it was a, it was my first time attending as an elected official. It was certainly different this time than every other time I've attended, and I am certainly much better off for having gone last week. The other thing I wanted to mention is with regard to the rent leveling board. I know that it's meeting on the second, and perhaps it's better for new business, but just wanted to encourage them to consider some of the complaints that are coming out of the residents from Ron Joelin Apartments. I've gotten several, and there are some issues with regard to other properties that the landlord may own. So I do think that should be a topic for conversation. I want to encourage our liaison to do that as well, and I will speak with my appointee. And then finally, on that same topic, those families are still in desperate need. Many of them are still looking for housing and still do need some support. So to the rest of the community that has been so helpful, and to my council colleagues who have certainly gone above and beyond Call of Duty, as well as the administration, just want to encourage us to keep our shoulders down. The problem is not solved yet. I'm going to leave it there, given that it's already after 7:00. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Council President, for this opportunity to convey updated information to our residents. So as I will pick up right where Councilman Rutherford left off, the rent leveling board does meet on December 2nd. However, we have only been noticed with one issue. So I anticipate that whatever else has been presented will be on the agenda as our chairman is very astute in making sure anything that has come before him is presented to the board for consideration. So certainly we'll be looking for that, and we'll make sure that is addressed, whether it be on the agenda or something that we need to deal with on new business. So thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. As well as the Rent-A-Board, the Rent-A-Board will meet in December as scheduled. And fortunately and unfortunately, based on our time, Council President, that is my liaison updates. I do want to remind the community and the public that on Saturday, I will be hosting community Give Back and Lunch at the I, I will be hosting community give-back and lunch at the Holy Trinity Food Bank. So when we have new business, I will re-address that opportunity for residents who are food insecure and make sure they have access to that information and anyone else who may need access to resources in our West Orange community. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. And in the interest of time, it is after seven. I will forego my council liaisons, nothing of a pressing matter, but certainly just wanted to extend my thanks to Councilman Rutherford. There are great workshops that we set in on, both for the cannabis and the environmental and the, the municipal laws that are changing, certainly great to hear. So that concludes the conference agenda. Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section Five of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter Two Thirty-One, Public Law, nineteen seventy-five. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November thirtieth, twenty twenty, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December tenth, twenty twenty. Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Castellino.
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney.
Present.
Councilman Rutherford.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Present.
Council President Mathieu Brown.
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk and to all my council colleagues. I do want to read a land acknowledgement before we open public comment while Madam Moderator gets the time up on the screen. We recognize that we reside on the land of the Lenape people and we honor and give thanks to them for stewarding these lands for generations. This is the time for public comments. If you would like to speak during public comment, please be sure to raise your hand. And you will be called upon, you do not have to wait until someone has finished speaking before you raise your hand. You can just go ahead and raise your hand and it'll put you in a queue. Madam Moderator.
Yes, ma'am. We have Joe Fagan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and good evening to you, Madam President, and your council colleagues and all members of the administration in attendance. I'm Joe Fagan, Public Information Officer, and thank you for the opportunity to briefly address the West Orange public this evening. I just want to start off quickly by saying that the Police Athletic League was chartered on March first, nineteen sixty-two in West Orange. And this upcoming March will represent sixty years of service to the West Orange community. I myself played on the PAL football Mustang team in nineteen seventy. We won the championship and as I recall, I was the starting quarterback and scored every touchdown that season. Of course, I'm only kidding. Just, just a quick update regarding leaf collection. I spoke to Joe Pelosi from Public Works today regarding leaf collections around town. He informed me that all streets west of Prospect Avenue have been done at least once. They are now focusing on the area of town below Prospect Avenue before repeating the process. Joe said that due to warmer weather, it has been a late drop of the leaves and that the bulk of leaves around town is likely to occur when colder temperatures arrive, which are expected. Residents can check the website at westorange.org for the do's and don'ts regarding leaf collection. Councilwoman Castellino has mentioned a lot of the things I was going to speak about tonight, so I will move on. I want to thank everyone who came out in support of the Veterans Day Ceremony on November eleventh. The event was well-attended and looked more like the Memorial Day Ceremony, which is typically a larger event. Mild temperatures also contributed to the success of the day. Speaking of veterans, the hometown hero banners, which adorn the downtown district, have temporarily come down. They have been replaced with holiday decorations and will return back to their original location towards the end of January. Finally, as we reflect upon all that we are grateful for this Thanksgiving, let us also think about our extended families and municipal government. Let us be mindful that a sailor never learned to become an expert seaman on calm seas. So whether it be rough or calm seas ahead, our spirited debates and varied opinions all respectfully serve to help make West Orange a better place. I am profoundly thankful for the opportunity to work here and be a part of it. Happy Thanksgiving to all and have a good meeting.
Thank you, Joe.
Any other members of the public besides Anthony? Sally Malanga, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Sally Malanga, Ridge Road. On behalf of our Green West Orange members, I'm hoping for a green Thanksgiving for all of us. And I have a few items to ask about. First, my understanding is that the West Orange taxpayers may be liable for damages to the former residents of the Ron Jolyn Apartments and the landslide. And I, that brings me back to saying we cannot fool around with ridgelines. And that brings me back to the Mount Pleasant Forest, which came before the Open Space Commission in two thousand and nineteen. And the mayor stated on Earth Hour in April of this year that he was preserving that forest. So that promise needs to be fulfilled. The Mount Pleasant Corridor deserves the same protections from flooding and landslides by preserving this last shred of forest on the east side. I heard that a number of you are advocating for this and that's wonderful. We need action. And let's write the resolution and make the application to green acres. My suggestion is that if you can't come to an agreeable price on that property, you can use your power of eminent domain and pay the property owner his appraised value. And everybody benefits. Next on my list, I'd like to bring up the gas-powered blowers problem. I'm sure you're all hearing and seeing this plague of noxious noise and pollution at this beautiful time of year. I'm seeing workers wasting so much time blowing dust and leaves in circles. And, and we've talked about that the pollution they create in an hour is equal to three hundred hours of a car. This has to stop. We have until twenty thirty to cut emissions in half in order to save us from the kind of catastrophic flooding that we have already begun to experience here in West Orange. So I'm asking you, are you willing to start with the gas-powered blowers? If not, what is your plan? The next thing on my list is what prompted the new stormwater ordinance that's on the agenda this evening? What is the difference between the new stormwater ordinance and the current one? And my last item is when will you release the information about pollution in the downtown redevelopment area that will be discussed in executive session? That doesn't sound good and our members are asking us, what is that about? So in conclusion, I'm urging again a workshop to write the climate change ordinances that will bring us into the twenty-first century for flood control with simple solutions like banning the gas-powered blowers, acquiring that Mount Pleasant Forest, street tree, regular street tree replacement and extra plantings, rain gardens and green roofs. It's really a necessity now and we have got to take immediate action to preserve ourselves. On behalf of all Green, our Green West Orange members, I thank you for everything and all that you will do on this topic.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Any other members of the public? Kevin Malanga. Name and address for the record.
Madam Honitor, thank you, Kevin Malanga, fifty-seven Ridge Road. Council President, members of the council, good evening.
Good evening.
I was looking at the township's noise ordinance recently and I saw an anomaly. In section four dash four point two, which is described as examples, paragraph F, it reads, unless otherwise allowed for herein, excavation, demolition, construction, repair or alteration work, quote-unquote, "construction activities shall only be permitted at the site of any residential or commercial property or on any vacant land other than between the hours of seven-thirty AM and seven PM from Monday through Friday, or between the hours of eight AM and seven PM on Saturday." I think there's a drafting error here because it would seem that during normal working hours, construction activities are prohibited based on this paragraph F. So, well, council for the council is looking at this to correct this error. It might be a good opportunity to redraft the entire noise ordinance because the noise ordinance is completely subjective. It lacks any objective criteria under which a court could adjudicate a complaint of excessive noise. The New Jersey DEP has a model ordinance. It provides objective criteria that can be utilized. It would require the purchase of a noise measuring device by the township, which is less than one thousand dollars, and requires modest training on the part of township officials. So I urge you to look at this ordinance, updated, I believe it has not been updated since nineteen seventy-two. It's a good opportunity to address this quality of life issue that's very important to the township. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public would like to speak? Anthony Puglisi, you're good to go.
Good evening, council. This is Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. Just a couple of things. First, on the vaccine front, we are continuing to offer first, second, third booster and pediatric doses at our three vaccination sites, which includes Kmart and West Orange. One change due to a recent high demand of people looking to get their booster doses. We are requesting that residents who come to get vaccinated, make an appointment at essexcovid.org. This isn't to scare anyone to thinking there's a shortage. We just want to make sure that we have enough vaccines on site each day. Our county executive doesn't like lines and he doesn't like turning people away. So for the time being, we are asking people to make their, to make appointments. And also, December fourth and fifth is the return of our Holiday House Tour. There's ten locations throughout Essex County. Each one has different operating hours. So if you go to EssexCountyNJ.org, you'll see a brief list of all the locations along with short descriptions of each location. And finally, Holiday Lights has returned. Last weekend was the opening weekend. We are going to continue for the next two weekends, so it'll be the Friday, Saturday and Sunday after Thanksgiving and then the following weekend. And then beginning December tenth, it's every night and that's from five to nine PM. Admission is free, but we are asking residents to bring either non-perishable food items, used winter coats or new toys, and these will be donated to organizations that assist residents in need. Wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and have a, have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Puglisi. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak before we close public comments? So please raise your hand.
I think we're done.
Okay, thank you so much, Madam Moderator. This closes our public comment portion of our agenda. So I certainly want to thank all who joined us this evening to share your comments. I'll start with Mr. Fagan. I'm sure that you were not kidding when you said you made every touchdown from when you played. Certainly appreciate that laugh. Ms. Malanga, with respect to whether or not the taxpayers may be liable for the landslide, that's not something that anyone can comment on. We have not had any experts come out to do any assessment. And first and foremost, that is the responsibility of the landlord. As I'm not sure whether or not you joined us during the last council meeting, but we have advocated to the state as well as to the municipality and the administration is seeking geotechnical engineers to proactively survey some of our mountain faces and ridgelines. We've asked the state for assistance because that is something that is well outside of our capacity and obviously very costly, but something that we have asked to be done in an effort to obviously avoid anything like this happening again, but also to strengthen our zoning ordinance with respect to the steep slopes and the ridge lines. I initially sent an email out early to the administration. The mayor has agreed and Ms. Councilman, Councilman Rutherford did also ask that we include ridgelines on there as well. So we are working towards that. You know, I'm sure nobody wants taxpayers to be liable for, for any conditions. But that, that is my answer to your question. With respect to the Mount Pleasant Forest, I am advocating for us to purchase that. I have always, I, I did not support when it was presented by way of a settlement to dismiss the case against Essex Green. As you know, my position was that we needed to make sure that if there was wrongdoing in the, amongst the council members, that we allow the process in the courts to work out that way. So my no vote to that was not because I was not supportive of the purchase. I wasn't not supportive of the purchase under those terms. However, I am supportive of preserving that now more than ever, obviously after we've experienced what we've experienced and see what the climate crisis is doing to towns all over. So I will continue to ask that we support that, especially since it is the last remaining forest on that east side. Use of power, that's something that is up to the administration to decide and council to support or not. I'm going to be very honest with you, I have worked from home this week and the leaf blowers have been incredibly noisy. I, I, people hear them on the phones. I, I wasn't supportive of that, have talked to other municipalities, especially at the league last week, Maplewood, South Orange, and they've seen some successes. They have purchased some electric leaf blowers for their DPW to start a trial, but also have implemented those restrictions. So I'm sure that that's something that we can revisit as a council. I, I would be happy to support that at this time. We will discuss the stormwater ordinance when we discuss the ordinance. I did have a question as to where that also, what prompted that as well. And the pollution in the downtown redevelopment, I can't comment to because I don't have any information on. As you know, we are having executive session later and that's when we will be brought up to date. But I would imagine that as soon as we are able to disclose that information and make that public, that we will. Mr. Malanga, I know that we've discussed the noise ordinance before with respect to the equipment that's required. It's not just the equipment, that's a matter of cost, but also personnel. Because as you can imagine, having someone run around every time there's a call is, is going to require a full-time body in that position. As far as their, the ordinance being subjective and nothing there, that it lacks criteria. I'm going to ask Attorney Kaiser, if you're still on, to please address that. I know that we have addressed this in the past and mimicking the ordinance that the state has is, is not quite enforceable for us. So can you please comment? ordinance that the state has is not quite enforceable for us. So can you please comment on that, Mr. Cazier?
Briefly, there's a lot of issues with the noise ordinance. And I'll point out that we have a town that's twelve to thirteen square miles in size. Their leaf blowers are going on all over the place, all the time. You'd need a whole lot of machines and a whole lot of personnel all at the same time, probably, to cover the town. The, the police chief is, we've had this debate about whether to use the state model ordinance. If we use it, we have to use it precisely as it is. We can't vary from it, where the state won't approve it. And if it's not approved by the state, it's not enforceable. We, we've kept the nuisance type of ordinance because it has some value. It's true that it's got a subjective standard, but it means that the police department has a reason to go. If there's a noise complaint, talk to the people about it. Very often, that stops the problem, which of course is helpful. What you want is the result. And it just, it has value. So I'm not going to go beyond that at this point. We can discuss this at length in new business or at another meeting. But we, and I think that the ordinance has been changed since nineteen seventy-two in part. Whether there's an error in drafting going back that far, I don't, I don't know. I'd have to look at it. But we can, we can address, you know, the noise ordinance at length at a different part of the meeting, I think.
Certainly appreciate that. I do, I just remembered that we have had this conversation before. And my concern, while I'm supportive of it, my concern is the personnel to support that. Because as you stated, times like now where leaf blowers are going off all the time, everywhere, that would be quite challenging to monitor. And as you said, if we adopted the state ordinance and did not follow it to a T, then it's, it's really not effective. What has been effective, and I won't, I won't say the the business owner's name, but the town, the town council has heard complaints that have been addressed. The police, the police chief has visited, and we've been able to work with that business owner to make sure to have some improvements for the neighbors that are in that immediate vicinity. So I do think that there is value to the nuisance, nuisance value to that ordinance because of that, because it is the ultimate result that we want. But happy to talk about that with my council colleagues at some time. You know, a matter of prioritizing funding and understanding personnel and personnel costs and what those implications are.
But Council President, one, one other item, because I actually attended the Environmental Commission meeting some months ago, at which there was a discussion about leaf blowers and whether electric or gas were noisier. And there's actually a genuine dispute about that. And, and more modern equipment that's operated by gases, apparently in some instances, less noisy than electric. So it's not such a simple issue.
Yeah, it is. It's pretty complex. And some of the things that, like I said, I reach out to my, you know, colleagues in neighboring communities that have done so. And to be honest, suspending or implementing an ordinance, and I won't say which municipalities, but implementing an ordinance banning leaf blowers in the summertime is, you know, the same as doing nothing. So that, that's why I was not supportive of, of, you know, passing that at that time. I think we need more in-depth discussion and, and studies. And I know that when Councilwoman McCartney addresses that, she has also had, I think it's the president of the Landscapers Association to the Environmental Commission. So I'll let you adjust that at that time. Mr. Puglisi, I'm really happy to hear that there is a recent demand in the boosters. That means that we are headed in the right direction, and I look forward to the time where we can all be back. Back to some sense of normalcy. Those are my comments. Councilwoman Catalina?
Sorry about that. Thank you, Council President. So I will start off with the gas blowers, the leaf blowers. So Mr. Malanga, with noise, I'm going to agree with, with our attorney. It does have a lot of merit to it and value, even though it is antiquated. I know the chief has, as Council President mentioned, has, has looked at it from time to time. A lot of the calls that I get from neighbors about the noise ordinance is usually about other neighbors in the summertime when people are playing music too loud. Where I live in the neighborhood I live in, the houses are much closer together. And so I always have to encourage neighbor to go talk nicely to neighbor and to try to straighten it out on their own. But we, you know, police have been calling to the same home numerous times, and people get frustrated and irritated. And again, it is subjective. And so they don't have the devices. So maybe one or two devices could help in some situation. It's not going to solve, solve the problem because there's multiple calls, especially in the summertime. So that's a conversation, again, for, for, for the chief to have with his, his staff and enforcement. In regards to the, the leaf blowers, I, I, right now, I feel the technology isn't there. It's still too expensive. I'm not going to put a small business owner out of business. They're suffering enough. Just trying to find a place to work for them. So, you know, I wouldn't want to address that right now. Also, charging. Councilwoman McCartney was on the call myself, and the downtown director, we had a charging company for the, for the car chargers for electric cars. Give us a presentation in regards to having car chargers in some of our, for some of our landlords and even possible the township. And I was shocked how long it takes to even charge a vehicle overnight. For someone like myself who drives many miles as a salesperson and some days, I wouldn't make it home because it takes a while to charge. And just asking about some of these landscape items, they, it takes a while to charge. So you have a contractor who has a busy day. It's, it, charging is going to be an issue, especially some, a lot of residences don't have outdoor outlets. So there's, there's a lot of issues with it, but not saying that it can't come in the near future. But I, I feel the technology is, isn't there yet where we could ask our business owners for that expense. Mrs. Malanga, thank you always for advocating for environment. It's, it's oh so important. You and I are always going to agree to disagree on that forest. The hottest market in real estate the past five years, and, you know, that piece of property has not been in danger of being sold. And, you know, I, I feel that until it is, like, we had a situation with Crestmont, then we had to make a decision. So until there is a situation, I'm not ready to go there, and mainly because we're going to inherit a lot of expenses for that property, the upkeep. There, there are walls that aren't structurally, you know, sound, and I shouldn't say sound, but there, you know, there's issues there. We would inherit the road. You know, there's, there's expenses, not to mention the loss of tax revenue. So I, I think the steep slope ordinance, I know Councilwoman McCartney is, is looking at that. And I feel that that's the way to go right now to protect that property. And if it does come in danger, then, then I'm willing to discuss it. But right now, again, the hottest real estate market, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of conferences on that property. There is, you know, bedrock. We won't give a pilot for any kind of major development. So I just don't, I'm just, I just don't want to move forward with that right now. But again, I, I may be, maybe my colleagues don't agree with me. But right, right now, that's where I stand firm with that property. And, but thank you for always advocating. And Mr. Fagan, so disappointed. I was out of town for Veterans Day. It's always such a beautiful ceremony with our veterans. You did an awesome job. I saw clips of it, you know, you know, Joe Brennan, Sherri Cork, all the, all the hard work that goes into it. The, our Elks, our Elks Club that always participates, just such a beautiful event. And I'm so proud that our township honors our veterans the way they do. It's, it's, it's so important. And I think, please, as always, thank you. I have to make my way up to Kmart sooner than later. And I still have time because I got my vaccinations late. But, you know, thank, thank you and the county executive and, and Board of Chosen Freeholders for all that you do for us. We have a great working relationship, as I say every meeting, and I look forward to doing the house tour. So thank you all. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you again. I think I'm going to pick up where, where Councilwoman Catalina just said she didn't know if anyone agreed with her on the twelve acres. This is in reference to Sally Malanga's comments. I do happen to agree with Councilwoman Catalina at this time. I just think the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change was recently released. The COP twenty-six just wrapped up last week. Purchasing the twelve acres does sound like an environmentally conscientious thing to do, but I feel that if honestly, if I believe that purchasing that property at this time would prevent such a horrific landslide as we saw in Northfield, I would not hesitate to make these recommendations. But purchasing those properties again at this time would have an additional tax burden for the residents. We just bonded twelve million for the golf course for one hundred and thirty-eight acres. We bonded the ninety-four acre subdivision at Crestmont. And I really do not believe that we need to add to that right now. It's not under threat of development. And it would take, I know Ten Ridge Road, again, it's on, on a private road, no public access. It's a five-point-eight acre lot. It is assessed, I have these numbers here, at four hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred dollars, bearing twenty-one, twenty thousand annually in taxes. Two Ridge Road is approximately seven acres, assessed at five hundred and twenty-four thousand, and that generates twenty-two thousand in taxes. I just do not believe that purchasing at that time would, at this time, would, would prevent anything. It would not change the runoff or the stormwater. Yes, of course, if there were development, but there is nothing pending before planning or zoning, and nothing has, has been, as Sally said a few meetings ago, that we haven't seen any development there in one hundred years. So hopefully, that will continue to not be developed. And I can't imagine anyone in their right mind even thinking about doing that right now on the cliff. They have given that information about the steep slope to the legal department. We can look at that. But I do not agree with purchasing that at that time. I didn't know about the leaf blowers coming up as tonight's discussion, but I did find some notes here. Council President and I did have the president of the New Jersey Landscapers Association at our meeting, and they had provided us with pamphlets and a lot of discussion about training operators. And they had also given the Environmental Commission a lot of documentation. And part of it talked about leaf blowers that had been changed in recent years, and that current emission standards have eliminated the pollution problem that was once associated with the two-stroke engine. And as to the noise, there are alternatives that are still gas-powered, but have noise ratings at sixty-five decibels or less, whereas some of the battery-powered counterparts are louder, which is what Attorney Cazier was just talking about. And that the gas-powered, yes, they could be loud, but they're more efficient as far as getting the job done, where if you're using the electric, it, get the electric powered, get leaf blowers, it takes that much longer and that much more noise associated with that. I know that there are other municipalities that are raising funds to buy these gas-powered, I mean, I'm sorry, the electric-powered motors for their municipalities. I know Sustainable Princeton has a goal of raising thirty-five thousand dollars to purchase them. A lot has to do with education. Part of the conversation that the Environmental Commission had at that meeting, it was back in March, we did talk about an ordinance that would curtail the operating hours, but the landscapers that we have met with and spoken to said that they don't operate during those hours anyway. So it kind of ends about now. And, you know, they, I think what they were using is Memorial Day and Labor Day. So it, it really, it really was going nowhere as a discussion. And what I would like to do is, yes, educate the community. I would like to work with the PRC. That was one of the topics that we had at the Environmental Commission, working with the, just to educate the community on at least the, I guess, the efficiency of the electric leaf blowers, and also about the single, the the new law that was just passed on, single-use plastic. So there are two things that we can educate the community on through the Environmental Commission and with the Public Relations Commission on the S eight sixty-four bill and the A one nine seventy-eight bill that was just passed on, single-use plastic. That would be one, one way to address our climate. Wanted to say thank you to Anthony Always for the work that the county is doing, and especially for making a difficult situation appear so appealing to young children as they receive their vaccinations. And to Joe Fagan, sixty years as a police, we just heard sixty years of pal coincidentally. And I look forward to our trolley tours on December fourth. I always look forward to that each year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney, Councilwoman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. Thank you to both Joe Fagan and Anthony Puglisi for their timely information. Mr. Fagan wanted to say a special thank you for the Veterans Day program, was able to attend that, and it was extremely well done. West Orange has a very well-decorated community, and they deserve to be honored, certainly, in high fashion, and they were that day. Also, with regard to the Kmart Vaccination Center, you know, I have advocated for everyone to get their vaccines. Took my nine-year-old there this week. The process was quick and almost painless. But the highlight was being able to watch Nickelodeon while she waited under the observation. So, you know, I, I have to give them credit. They have done a great job, certainly, making sure that the vaccine is available, but also making sure that folks are comfortable while they are there. Ms. Malanga, so I will state again that I am supportive of purchasing the Mount Pleasant Forest. I am concerned about the amount of debt that we have taken on and the, and that we continue to add to that. And so I'm hesitant. I know it's only, you know, it's not a large sum, or by some views, it's not a large sum. But since there isn't an immediate threat to development there, I think it's, I think it's worth taking the time to figure out how to pay for it. I do believe that four acres of the twelve are buildable, and that is where the issue lies. If those four acres are purchased, and we don't have a moratorium, which I requested at our last council meeting, those four acres are purchased, and we don't have a moratorium on building on steep slopes, you could see some building there, and that could further erode that hillside. There are apartments just below. But even more than that, the bend around, around Mount Pleasant Avenue frequently gets extreme runoff, and folks that aren't familiar with that curve can drift into oncoming traffic. It is certainly a hazard, and it does need to be addressed. So we are, we are aware of the issue and supportive of doing it. I am looking forward to further conversations with the administration to see what, if anything, can be done to purchase it, or to at least grab an option to purchase it down the road. And I know there's some difficulty there. I'm not trying to get into weeds. But there, there may be some things that we can do to preserve it without actually having to take on the full purchase amount right away. I do want to encourage, and I don't know if Mr. Cazier can address I do want to encourage, and I don't know if Mr. Kaiser can address this. I do want to encourage us to have a moratorium on the building on steep slopes. We talked about this at our last council meeting. I don't know what, if anything, can be done. But I was at the site again, yes, at the site, 275 Northfield, just yesterday, helping one of the residents there. And, you know, I, perhaps I didn't recognize it the first time that I saw it, but it, it looks as if it has, it may be settled in even closer or filled in even closer to the building. So I am certainly concerned about that steep slope and all of them in town. And until we can have, and I do applaud the administration for taking the leadership step to solicit aid from the state to get professionals here to evaluate all of these steep slopes. But until we get to that point, I would love to know what our ability to place a moratorium on projects cited at steep slopes. Can you address that for us, Mr. Kaiser?
Yeah, briefly. And I had actually done some research that night and the following day, real quickly after that discussion. And basically came to the conclusion that it's possible to enact a building moratorium, but it has to be very limited in time and scope. And I'm not sure it would frankly be worth doing that because I think we could probably change the steep slope ordinance before we, you know, within the period of time that would be required to enact such an ordinance. And I know that there, that's being discussed and worked on. I don't know. I'm not involved in that, so I can't specify where we are with that. But it's clear that building moratoriums are discouraged. To some degree, they're banned, but it just, they're permissible, but only for short periods of time and for a limited scope. You have to have good reason for them. And we have so many steep slopes and, you know, and cliffs in this town and frankly throughout a lot of New Jersey, as has been discussed. And Mr. Gross has talked about the fact that we'd like to get the state to come in and help and, and, you know, perhaps do some studies of these things. This is not a local problem. It's, it's a regional, a state problem, probably a national problem in a lot of places. And I guess, you know, I'm fortunate enough to have been to Italy, and I've seen the building there on much steeper slopes than we have that's been there for hundreds and thousands of years. It's rather, it's striking. It's amazing. I don't know how they did it, how they do it. But, you know, there's multiple ways to get at this problem. And I think we just need to take a little bit of time in doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. If, once we address our, update our steep slope ordinance, I would assume that that would only affect new projects, not existing projects. Is that correct?
Yes, that's, I believe that's true.
So the, the, the projects that have been granted variances on steep slopes, that would remain?
I don't know how many projects there are presently pending like that, if that's your question. Obviously, if something's already been built, it's a fait accompli. It's been done.
Well, I'm specifically thinking about the Pleasant Valley Way project in particular. That's the one that I know has some variance, but has not yet begun construction.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with that project, and, you know, I don't get involved with the land use board, so I can't speak to that. I don't know if Mr. Tran can speak to it or not, but I think that's all. Go ahead.
My, my concern is the homes that are above that, if we weaken that, you know, we've seen what happened to the Ron Jolene Apartments that were below the steep slope. We don't know what would happen if the homes that are above the steep slope, if that gives way, how that will affect and weaken those properties. So, you know, I, I don't know what can be done, but I really think this is an all-hands-on-deck type problem. And whatever is in our power, we should explore using it.
So, Councilman, I just want to jump in and thank you for turning on your camera, Mr. Tran. Welcome back. I know that we missed you during the last council meeting, and we did briefly talk about this as well. The last conversation you and I had, you advised that you weren't going to be able to, because you were traveling, have a draft zoning ordinance, an amended draft zoning ordinance. Can you tell us where you are with that? Where your office is with that?
Again, with regard to, if we're talking about steep slope, we do have a steep slope ordinance, and we are reviewing it based upon some of the input that I think Councilwoman McCartney provided. All I can do is assure you, and Councilwoman McCartney was involved in it, even when we addressed through the affordable housing litigation, the last largest remaining track, which is obviously the Highlands Track, we were very careful and not only got it off the steep slope, but we got it probably another 60 or 100 feet beyond that so that it would never implicate what I'll call the Mayfair area. So there, I'm not sure the project that Councilman Rutherford was referring to on Pleasant Valley Way, so I apologize as to that. But certainly our land use boards are familiar with it. And yes, I did ask, and I'll, I'll find out exactly where at. Mr. Greigle, if there's anything we can do to fine-tune it. But our boards, I think, are acutely aware of this as an issue. But I have to say, I do not know of any project that is currently before the boards that would implicate a ridge line. But I'll, I'll check on it, and we will, I took the zoning ordinance before I did go away, looked at it. We had spent an enormous amount of time on this previously. And I do think it is somewhat detailed, but I would suggest that maybe if you see a lighter again to coming up, that we segregate some defined time, and we could post the ordinance as available on loan beforehand so that the public can provide input.
But that sounds like a good idea. But, you know, strengthening it is certainly something I think all of us are are supportive of, to prevent any variances to be given on those slopes or ridge lines. Apologies, Councilman. Go ahead.
No, that's fine. I appreciate the conversation. So the project on Pleasant Valley Way, I think, is the storage facility. And I know there was some discussion about building where the Essex House is, and there's a steep slope directly behind that as well. And those are, there are homes on, you know, on the top of those ridges that I think, if I were living there, I would be concerned about any building below that might further weaken the hillside. But we can save that. We're not going to solve the problem in the council meeting. But I do want to make sure that we are all focused on that. Where I lost myself, lost my...
I do want to add, jump in while you're thinking. We did follow up, you know, as you referred, suggested, we did send, the mayor did send a letter to the governor and the lieutenant governor and Department of Community Affairs asking for their guidance on this issue. And we've got no formal response, but the mayor did direct that we put some phone calls out. So we are hoping now that the election's over and hopefully as soon as the holiday is over, that we'll get some more affirmative response. Because again, this is a highly technical area. And I know that Mr. Gross is working on seeing if we can get some, at least on some basis, certainly around that 275 area, to see if we can get some understanding as to whether or not there's any other issues. I'm not aware, Councilman Rutherford, of any further, we'll call it, failures. We acted proactively, as you recognized, so that, because it was close pretty immediately, the first four or five units were vacated immediately. And then on October 11th, when we got that October 8th letter, we, we weren't going to wait any longer. So I don't know of any further failures, but you're right. It's right there, you know. And again, we did have a 500-year storm. That doesn't mean, and the problem is, we'll probably have more. And that's why we have to think through this carefully.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to imply that there has been a further failure. And so please, you know, to the public and whoever's watching this in the future, that is not what I am claiming, and I don't think any of the residents are claiming that either. It just, when I saw it yesterday, you know, it struck me as being even further closer to the, to the, to the building than initially. But, you know, again, I saw it one time weeks ago. It's just a very, it's a, the site is moving. Not moving in the sense that the hillside is moving. It is moving to me emotionally to see that level. I don't want any of this stuff to be, to come back and bite me down the road. So to see that level of destruction was moving as I looked at it yesterday. Not that the hillside was still moving, just to be clear. Last thing I'll say, and I know we've, we've been going over so far tonight, but last thing I'll say is the leaves are falling later this year, and, and I don't know if that's a part of climate change or not, but we are going to have noise later in the year. Certainly, no one wants to have, you know, significant noise from these leaf blowers. But we do have to consider the fallout or the collateral damage that would come from something of that nature, banning gas-powered blowers, which while I am supportive of in general, I think the business community needs to be considered. And we have to have a plan to kind of give landscapers some kind of an off-ramp or landing ramp, so to speak, to transition to something else. So that, that's my comment to the Malangas with regard to the gas-powered blowers. And I think I covered all of my notes. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President. So I usually start my council remarks thanking Mr. Fagan and, and Mr. Puglisi for giving us updates from the township municipality as well as the county. I am looking forward to viewing the Festival of Lights. And while I do not have any small children, what I will encourage mothers, parents, families of those older teens is to take your kids. It's a wonderful family field event. I will encourage you to listen to your children, ask them what they think. And especially during this week of Thanksgiving, to ask them what they are grateful for and encourage you as parents, caregivers, to simply just listen. Ms. Malanga, thank you so much for always giving your time, thoughts, and advocacy to the community of West Orange in which you reside. As you know, I am an environmental advocate. But as an elected official, I do indeed understand that we need to levy and weigh those things that are most prevalent to our community as we continue to determine how we spend our dollars. And, and you have heard me tell you, and I will continue to advocate to the community as my council colleagues, a few of them have, have also indicated that unless we have an imminent threat of development at the 12-point-plus acres at Ridge Road, I don't find it necessary for the municipality to act. If you will recall, with the Crestmont development and the acquisition of that acreage, as well as the Rock Spring Golf Course acreage acquisition, we, as a municipality, were advised of a developmental threat. And we, as a municipality, responded, reacting very quickly and opted to purchase that land and keep it as open space. As long as Ridge Road is owned and maintained, good, bad, or indifferent from an individual owner in West Orange, I don't see the need for us to spend municipal dollars to acquiesce that property right now. Doesn't mean that we won't do so if that danger is inherent. But as of now, I think it is more pressing and prevalent for us to spend our dollars on things that create an imminent threat to, to our community. Mr. Malanga, as far as the ordinance is concerned, certainly agree that many of our municipal ordinances should require an update. But again, as far as our environmental concerns are, you know, as with the noise ordinance, we, we, we will have a review of what is necessary. But again, those things are not the most pressing dangers to, to our community. Also, wanted to make the community aware. In an effort to address food insecurity, remind neighbors that our Holy Trinity, Christine's Pantry, will be open on Saturday. I am hosting with friends in the community and surrounding organizations hot food lunches on Saturday to go. So please, if you are in need of a hot meal, we know that while this is Thanksgiving and a time for us to be grateful for all that we have, that we still have families that are, that are in dire need of support. And so there are various community events leading up to Thanksgiving for turkey giveaways, et cetera, in the community. I think there was even an event today for community giveaways for turkey distribution, as well as food boxes with the Life Christian Church in West Orange. But if you are still in need of items to sustain your family, please stop by Christine's Kitchen on Saturday between the hours of 12 and 1:00, and we will have hot meals to go. We will also have the mobile Essex County van there, available distributing vaccines for those who need their first, second shots, as well as for those who are interested in booster vaccines. And there will be dosages for children as well. So please feel free to stop by on Saturday. Anytime between vaccines will be available from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00. And the Food Pantry distributes, as it does on every Saturday, of food between 12:00 and 1:00. And we will be providing hot meals. In addition to Saturday's food insecurity give-back, on Thursday, as we know, it's Thanksgiving, and what we do is overeat. So on Thursday at 9:00 a.m. at the pavilion, as you walk around the Turtle Bag Zoo, we are going to host a dance session at 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. We're just going to dance our, our time away, get ready for those calories on Thanksgiving Day. So if you're ready, willing, and able, you just want to do something, if you're available, please come out to the Turtle Bag Zoo, to the pavilion area as you're walking around the bend, and we will start dancing our calories away. That will be in combination with the Grassroots Foundation, which partners with so many different organizations here locally in West Orange, as well as our surrounding communities and beyond. So if you're interested in just getting out, grooving, moving, you know, wear some, some warm clothes. We know the weather is going to be chilly.
Sorry, my Zoom just timed out. It was odd.
Yeah, mine did too.
Yeah, I think it was everywhere.
What happened? Yeah, I think I'm bad. But as you know, just exercising the mental and the physical is extremely important. Initiative for me, healthcare, health, and mental wellness are very important. So please come out and join us, 9:00 a.m. Thursday morning. Get a little bit of exercise before we indulge in turkey and, and all the things that come with that. And I hope to see you there. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams, and to all my colleagues, thank you for your thoughtful responses to our public comments.
Hey, it's time to review the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting minutes, November 9th, 2021.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions, communications, and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening, Council President?
Yes, actually, I am pulling a resolution this evening. Not necessarily to vote against it, but I think that we need to have discussion on it. I did send an email on Sunday, and I did get some responses, but this one I need some clarification on. So I'm going to pull 290. Uh, this one I need some clarification on, so I'm gonna pull two ninety. Thank you. Um, and I do have questions on a couple of others. Um. Did any of my council colleagues have any that they wanted to pull?
I just had questions on two ninety.
Uh, is that the one that I just pulled?
Yes.
Good. Um, anyone else? Okay, so um, let's go through, I did have um, Mr. Um, Gross, if you can. Just for the benefit of the public, can you discuss um? Resolution two ninety-four, which is the extension renewal agreement for the Benecar. It extends. The contract for a term of a year from January first, twenty-two, to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah, this is a um, a extension of a contract uh that we have with um for our, our prescription. Insurance for our employees and our retirees uh under the age of sixty-five. Uh, this is, the contract is the extension. We, we've been with Benecar for quite a long period of time. Uh, we, we're satisfied with the level of service that we get from Benecar. Uh, we had no increase last year. This year is an increase of two percent. Uh, so that is, and last year's was over a two-year period, there was, was no increase. So we, we feel very um positive about um putting forward this contract for renewal. Uh, it, you know, it, it satisfies our employees' needs as well as our financial needs, we believe. Um, it's important to note that this is an ever-changing market. Uh, we also did look at. Another alternative, and we looked at the possibility of doing self-insurance. And while there may have, there may be some re, some savings from self-insurance. The, the, the possibilities of loss uh is much greater than the potential savings. So we decided that it was not something that we wanted to risk at this point in time, so we put forth this resolution for you this evening.
Okay, and, and also just wanted to share with my council colleagues that this is not, the Benecar prescription. Um, does not include our retirees as they participate in the Medicare portion um of this. Otherwise, I would say that um I was very concerned to find out, and you know, I always say if I'm wrong, I'll eat pro, but. You know, things happen as they should, I believe. Um, the retiree benefits uh plan. With the state went up about thirty-three percent this year. So I'm gonna say that I breathe a sigh of relief in that space, that we did not go in that direction because it would have been. Incredibly difficult talent. Listen, I'm gonna tell you, if I'm wrong, uh, you know, I'm wrong. At the time, it was affordable. And I share that with my council colleagues, but also more so for the public as well, because. While, yes, I did advocate for the state uh plan because it was uh more affordable. The challenge was obviously all unions had to go in, and not all of them wanted to go in. Um, and more so the police unions did not want to go in because the retirees would not go in. Um, and so having seen that jump in the benefits um prescription for retirees. Of thirty-three percent this year, it was a sigh of relief that I um. Was not successful in getting you all to support that move. And that's the truth. Councilwoman, um, is it on, is it on this, um? Okay, nah, okay, hang on, I just wanna go through the ones that I have, and then I'll, if you have others, then we can address those.
I, I just wanna make that point, just to tease you, cuz that's why, cuz I saw that when I was on the school board. That we priced out that state plan every year, and then the year after we dropped down, it would, it would go up. It's just the nature of the beast, so.
Yeah, and that, and by that much, I was really blown away. Um, and that was my discussions with someone who, who sits on that, on that commission. It was quite, um, you know. Quite revealing. Um, and then um, Mr. Gross, can you also go over two ninety-five for the benefit of the public as well? This is for our stop-loss coverage. If you can first explain what stop-loss coverage is.
A stop-loss coverage, basically, since we are self-insured for our medical. Uh, for our uh retirees under the age of sixty-five and for all of our employees. Stop-loss coverage basically protects the township if we have an unusually large loss. So basically, we pay the first two hundred thousand dollars of claim for each person. If an individual goes over two hundred thousand, the stop-loss um insurance coverage kicks in. Uh, we always have. Three to five to six people a year who go over and then, and that we end up, you know, where we spend the first two hundred thousand. And uh then we, we get that, the rest of that money back uh from the stop-loss coverage. This particular one, this, we're, uh, we're, we're going uh back to a company called Sun Life. Last year, we left them because a competitor, Berkeley, gave us a, a competitive quote. Um, and now this year, they've decided that they, they, they guess they wanted us back, cuz they gave us an even better quote this year. Very good company, we've had great experience with both of them. Uh, and so uh we're following the savings of somewhere between eighty to a hundred thousand dollars. For our residents by moving over to the, the Sun policy this year.
Okay, thank you for that. Did any of my colleagues have questions on either of those resolutions? If not, I have one more before I move on. Um, and that is on three oh one, and Mr. Gross, you and I spoke about that, but Mr. Lapore just had a question to follow up with respect to. Three oh one, and thank you for answering the question um by email for the other resolution. Ms. Lapore, are you there? Probably not, okay. Oh, there you are. Thank you, Ms. Lapore. So the resolution is with respect to the purchase of solar-powered LED stop signs and solar-powered LED. Driver speed feedback signs through the Somerset County Co-op. Um, and the quote is forty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-six eighty-six. Um, the threshold. Which requires a, a resolution by the council, um, if it exceeds. Their threshold is forty-four thousand dollars. So I was a little confused as to why we needed the resolution if it's under forty. Under the threshold?
Because uh earlier this year, we purchased a, a similar uh amount and dollar amount of equipment. Uh, without going before the council, so now this in aggregate takes us over the forty-four thousand dollar threshold.
Okay.
From the same vendor, same equipment.
Okay, so um, did any of my other council colleagues have any questions on that resolution? I, I, I thought I was confused. Thank you, um, Mr. Lapore. Um, Councilwoman uh Williams, questions?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I apologize. I did have a question regarding uh Resolution two eighty-eight. Um, twenty-one, which is for the Downtown West Orange Alliance. And my only question was regarding the information that was provided to us. Um, we have received their projected budget um for twenty-twenty-two. But normally, we receive um information that identifies what their expenses have been year-to-date. So I was just concerned um that we did not get that information, it appears. And again, this is my first year as an elected official. Um, while I have served in the past on the um Budget Review Committee, and I have attended several. Um, of our commission um elected official town council meetings. I just didn't remember seeing um only a one-pager on the projected. Expenses or, or projected um. For, for the, for the upcoming year. So I, I was just a little concerned in the discrepancy. And, and why we're receiving um uh abbreviated uh resolution.
If I could just, I mean, I, 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 I'll surmise it. The probable reason is, this is a two-step process.
Yeah.
Um, this is the first evening of it, it's just an introduction, and at the, the next council meeting. Uh, uh, that, uh, will be presented for adoption. Uh, and I would believe that all that information will be forthcoming for that meeting. Now, I will make sure that it is. Uh, but I'm, I'm certain that's the intention.
Yeah.
Go, go ahead, Councilwoman Catalina.
Yes, and, and to your point, Mr. Gross, actually, it's not going to be the next meeting, cuz there's so many days that. Uh, the director can have a um, from the first reading to the second reading, and we didn't make. That a lot, and so it'll be the first meeting in January. Uh, that the director will make her presentation with an extended version of what you see today, so.
And also that, that resolution, I, well, it's just the letter, it's not the actual resolution, but just wanted to point out in case the public. Once this is up, well, it is up on our website, but two eighty-eight, twenty-one reads presentation on second reading, this is actually.
The first reading.
The first, so just wanted to uh make that correction. Um, did that answer your question, Councilwoman?
Okay, thank you, Council President. Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Catalina.
You're welcome.
Um, uh, Councilwoman Catalina, you have your hand up.
Yeah, so mine is on uh, just question on two ninety.
I did, I pulled that one, that one's pulled.
Yeah, okay, so we'll talk about that.
Yeah, we'll talk about that. Um, any one of my council colleagues have any other questions on the resolutions? Um, that they need answered before we adopt them all on consent?
Council President?
Yes.
Um, I think that you guys might be looking at an old agenda. Cuz two eighty-eight, uh, I had to renumber resolutions.
You know, yes, and you emailed that as well.
Right.
So I am.
Just wanna make sure everybody has the right agenda, in case there's any other questions they may have.
Yeah. I, I, I saw the updated one, I, I just have the older one.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Certainly, thank you.
But two ninety is still the same one that we're pulling for the public.
Starts, yeah.
If you're, if you're following, that is still the um one we are pulling.
Right, and it's the, the agenda's on the screen right now, so.
Yeah, so it's the resolution authorizing the tax appeal and signage agreement. Um, okay, so if there are no further questions. From, uh, Ms. Lapore, you have your hand up. Is that, is that intentional by accident? Ms. Lapore? I'm gonna guess that that was probably by accident. Okay, thank you. Um, all right, since there are no other questions, um, Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Uh, Resolution two ninety dash twenty-one was pulled by Council President. A resolution authorizing tax appeal and signage agreement, CLPF Essex Green.
Thank you, um, Madam Clerk. So I did email the administration um. On Sunday, I, I've lost my days with all these events happening. Um, and my question was. You know, I, I go a little bit sometimes beyond the, what's on the resolution, and when I looked up the lot and block number. On our Muni Index, I found that the stated current assessment on this settlement agreement. On page, well, it's, uh, it's the first page of the settlement agreement. Um, item number two, where it says twenty-twenty-one property tax appeal. Um, the current level of block one fifty-five, twenty-one, lot forty. States that it's seventy million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred. But when I looked on the Muni Index. Um, it was actually seventy-five million. Um, and that's, yeah, I don't have the email in front of me, but it was a little over seventy-five million, so. My question was, what, what, is that a typo, or was that a discrepancy? I know that. This um settlement agreement is to settle the, both the affirmative. Appeals the township filed and the appeals that um Clarion um Essex Green owner had filed. So I'm, I'm confused by that, and then also. When we're looking at the settlement on number three, we're talking about um settling. All, all um, the, the affirmative appeal from the township and the defense appeal from Clarion Essex Green. Uh, for two years, twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three, for an assessment of sixty million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Um. And so my concern is that it, it appears that we are reducing that assessment by. By ten million for year twenty-twenty-two and ten million for twenty-twenty-three. So I'm, I'm confused as to, how did we get from? What is online in the Muni Index, that's a little over seventy-five million for assessment, to what is stated in number two? And then um, we can discuss that further.
Yeah, I, I can address it, uh, the, the issue with um, the, the tax assessor. At the beginning of this year, uh, reduced the assessment moving forward for this year. Uh, in anticipation of settle, the settlements that uh we were discussing for this case. Anything that happens during the current year, it, it, it's a timing issue with the county system, doesn't hit. Um, that, the, the website that you're, you were, that you're looking at until it's renewed at the end of the year. So um, that, that will, that, that's the reason that it is down. It was a decision made by the assessor at the point in time. Uh, based on his analysis um moving forward uh in, in order to, uh, quite frankly. Uh, one, one of the things you don't want, and one of the reasons you're looking at a settlement in this contract over the next two years. As opposed to previous years, is it's, it's much better for the taxpayer um to, to reduce a future settlement. Than to pay back settlements from previous years. So we're, we're, we've been very aggressive. In trying to do that in, in Detroit, and try to uh protect the interests of the taxpayers. And this is an example of that uh type of a settlement. Um, and, you know, I, I understand the confusion because of the, the way the timing that it plays out. And what's on the website, and I, while I can apologize to you for that confusion, it's a systematic problem in, in the way. Uh, not just this county, but in state New Jersey, uh, tax assessments are done, and, and the way the data is, is presented. Uh, and, and billed, because we, the reason being is, we bill based on the last year's assessment. So, uh, you know, what you're looking at is our billing data uh for the first half of the year. And that, 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 that's what you're looking at, and so that's what you're seeing, and that's why there's confusion.
So, so I can understand procedurally how that works, right? I mean, everybody knows government works slow, and those processes we can't control. Because we don't maintain that website. One hundred percent understand that. What, what is troubling to me, um, and concerning to me is that we, I, I understand that there is um. You know, appeals that we initiated affirmative because we felt that the, obviously, that the property was going to be valued at a higher rate. I. I don't understand why the settlement in anticipation of.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Catherine, you don't, I understand what part of?
The set, the, the reduction of the assessment value in advance of a settlement.
Because they are waiving the right for four years of potential refunds. That, as you see in paragraph one, they're dismissing all of any uh of their, we'll call it negative appeals. We're dismissing our affirmative appeals, and what we're doing is, we're adjusting the amounts going forward. That avoids us, and just for the record, recently, the Kmart Shopping Center, or Whole Foods, whatever you wanna call it. Was successful after a lengthy trial, and that potential matter, which we have now taken up an appeal. Will cost the town over a million dollars plus interest uh in refunds. If we do not prevail on appeal or otherwise resolve it. So as Mr. Gross said, what we've tried to do is, number one, uh, seek. For the tax assessor, when he sees an appeal of this magnitude to, for lack of a better word, self-correct future ones. And in this case, the benefit they're getting in the twenty-two and twenty-three and twenty-four assessments. Um, obviously, in twenty-five will be a revow. None of this impacts the ability for added assessments. We all know there is substantial work going on there now, which is to the positive, and so as those assessments come online, or as those improvements come online. Um, Mr. Dillon has the right and obligation, and he will, as he always does, uh, make the appropriate adjustments. Again, it has to be October first, so it'll probably not be this October first, but I, I won't speak to what, what the tax assessor's doing. All I'm saying is, the reason it's structured this way is that when you take into account in the end. What would be four years back and three years forward, you have seven years. And that's why that ramification, and of course, as you know, this entire area is the epicenter of this, of the township. And we have some exciting things coming on, including the new library uh that uh everyone is supporting. that everyone is supportive of. We want to integrate this site. We want to see a lot of signage. And that's why part of the negotiation, which is unusual, was for them to agree that the library signage plan, which you all have as Exhibit A, will be integrated as part of the settlement.
So I do want to say for the for the benefit of the public, and Mrs. Trank, you and I have, it's been quite some time since we sat on a conference call so that I could better understand as a as a new council member, how the settlements and these negotiations proceeded. And I know last year that this was an ongoing concern. And so I just, you know, since that was the last update, I wanted to to have those questions answered, but I also want the public to understand that this, we're talking about assessed value, right? So when I say that there's a ten million dollar assessed value, that doesn't mean that we're, that they're not going to pay ten million dollars of their taxes. So I just want to clarify that. It's ten million in an assessed value. And I, we've all sat here, some longer than other of my council colleagues, and had to pay back some settlements or judicial awards judgments from the Tax Appeals Court. So I understand the process. I just didn't, I was confused as to what I was seeing online and what I'm seeing here. So I'm satisfied with that answer, and thank you for that. Did any of my council colleagues, I know Councilwoman Castellino, you had your hand up, and then I see you're getting your hand up, Councilman. Councilwoman Castellino, and then Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. So so Mr. Trank, so because that was one of my questions. So with the, obviously, the new building that's coming in, the Starbucks standalone, that would be considered an additional assessment, obviously.
I think, again, I'm, the tax assessor is obviously been doing this probably longer than I'm alive. So, I mean, I think it has to be on the books, and a CO has to be issued on October.
Obviously, yeah, yeah, once a CO is given.
Right, exactly. So the Starbucks is obviously probably not going to be on the books for twenty two, but knock on wood, will be on the books for twenty three. So again, none of this hamstrings the ability of the tax assessor to do his job with regard to improvements.
And just to just to clarify that, the timing, the timing has to do that it actually goes on the books. But when it's assessed, is based on when to get a CO. So even though it may not make the October, it may not have made the October cutoff, if it if it opens up in, let's say, February one, it will be added on later in the year as an added assessment as a as that comes on after the fact. So it's not a matter that we won't get the taxation on it because it missed the deadline. It's just a matter, it won't make this year's bill. It'll come as an added later on, and they'll get a they'll get a separate bill at the end of the year.
But it also, they get they get billed back to their CO, correct?
Right, that's correct. That's correct.
Yeah. Okay, and then in addition to all that, the, from what I'm seeing here, is the the signed budget per se is seventy five thousand dollars.
Right, that's correct. That 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 the, the more, obviously, it makes a lot of sense as you can appreciate for our signage to be integrated with theirs, so, you know, we don't have all kinds of crazy signs. And that, you know, they're obviously going to do signage for their improvements. So at the same time, but again, this, the architect and the mayor and I met with him on Friday with Mr. Gross and Mr. Abbott and Mr. Sayers. He's been working closely with the library board, and that's his work that's attached to Exhibit A.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I like the banners. I like the banners going into the entranceway. This, you know, and I appreciate all the meetings that March Minion, Dave QB, the the board members themselves that have been meeting all year with the design, going over the fine details. I had asked, and Mr. Laporte and I had a brief conversation, I just want to let you know, Mr. Trank, because I brought it up to to March Minion. And I'm not sure if this would fall into this budget category or not, because it falls right outside the library. But I'm hoping for a, I hope they design a drop off area, because I see jitney buses coming up there. We've discussed that before, whether it's a seniors, whether the school sends a bus up, parents, parents drop off in front of the main entrance. So I would hope if you jot down on a note, somebody thinks whether it comes out of this budget or our budget signage for drop off, because it's a perfect opportunity for parents to drop off their children, you know, go shop at the mall. I know my kids are in middle school. That's what I'd be doing once, once it opens up and come back to pick them up. So if we could look at that signage as well. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Trank, we, so we, my understanding that we filed an affirmative tax appeal, which means that we thought that they should be paying more in taxes. Is that right?
We review, Mr. Wow, Mr. Hendricks, they review it on an annual basis. And keep in mind, this is the shopping center that, I don't remember the year, that traded, that was transacted for in excess of ninety million. So that certainly raised the red flag of the potential. But let's not forget, value is not totally based on the value it sells at. This mall then had substantial vacancies for quite some time. And of course, COVID didn't help anything. So and, you know, let's not forget Macy's was, you know, Sears went bankrupt, they bankruptcies and whatnot. So they had they had defensive tax appeals, we had affirmative tax appeals. And yes, this is the resolution of all those issues.
So it just strikes me as odd, because, you know, I know Sears is no longer there. Macy's put their backstage there. I don't know if they're still there or not. But Sears just went bankrupt recently. It's, I think the transaction was ninety seven million. So to go from seventy five to seventy in one year, and then from seventy to sixty as the assessed value, they're paying, their assessed value is about sixty percent of the market value. And I know they're not directly correlated, but that seems wildly off to me. Am I missing something?
Well, keep in mind, what, the part that you you have to factor in the analysis is, we're not going backwards. So they paid at the assessed numbers. As you know, you can't prosecute a tax appeal unless you pay your taxes currently. So they paid it. So what you're seeing here is the adjustments going forward, which are in part compensating the back. You know, it's all one, you know, money is fungible. So so when you see the assessments being fixed at sixty million dollars for twenty two and twenty three, that's what you're seeing. So you really, you got to factor in that this is basically seven years of taxes that are being, what I'll use the word smoothed out, so to speak. And again, it avoids having the refund, it avoids having to pay a refund with interest, it avoids the risk of of the litigation. And again, it does create the scenario where the town is obviously putting a substantial investment in this corridor, in this area, with the new dog park and the library and whatnot. So it's not a perfect science. And all I could tell you is, as Mr. Gross said, we have lost tax appeals. And the problem is, when they get to be three and four and five years rolled up, you have to scratch your head and say, this certainty of a resolution of this nature, especially when it's not going to have, keep in mind, none of this has a long term impact. In twenty twenty five, we're going to have a revow. Every line item in the town is going to be reappraised. And so these numbers don't necessarily mean anything to that process. All this is going to do is lock in the assessment numbers for the next three years, twenty two, twenty three, and twenty four, and no refunds.
If you, if if you, if you're trying to equate this out over the the actual period that was in question, you really got to cut those numbers in half in in terms of what what this would look like over that seven year period. Because Mr. Trank is exactly right. We're back ending this so that we don't have to go back to the taxpayers and ask them to do refunds, which which causes all kinds of havoc with the tax collection rate, which increases the amount of money we have to put in the budget. And it really, it makes it much more difficult for the taxpayer. So by doing this, and this is what I mentioned earlier, and maybe I wasn't clear enough, we've tried very hard to avoid going back and 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 refunding people for or entities or owners for tax appeals that have already, periods that have passed us by to protect the taxpayers from that. So what that ends up doing sometimes is it does backload an increase. And and you say, well, geez, why would you want to do that? And the reason we want to do this particular way, it's opportune, because in twenty five, we're going to revow. So all, everything's off board anyway. So you don't, it's not like you're you're setting a new standard that's going to go on for the next ten years. So this is really an economical way to protect the interests of the taxpayers. And quite frankly, let's be honest, there there's a taxpayer that 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 is getting the appeal. And and we're required to be fair to them as well. And so this is a way to be equitable to everyone, but not put a burden on the remaining taxpayers.
I appreciate that, and I don't pretend to know this as well as you, Mr. Gross, or you, Mr. Trank. It just seems to me, I think the transaction was in twenty seventeen, I could be wrong. And the years that the tax, that their negative tax appeal would cover, would cover years where, you know, Macy's was fine, Sears was fine, there was substantial. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, Sears just went out of business this year.
So I think they've been gone quite a while. You know, and 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 Macy's has been, the the number of of retail establishments in that mall that even some that hung on, but just barely. And and I believe that, I mean, I I I don't know this individually, but my impression was is that that the the owner was working with them, trying to trying to keep them alive. And some, ultimately, they they just lost because of the economics.
Was the transaction in in two thousand seventeen when Clarion purchased it? What year did they purchase it?
It's either sixteen or seventeen, or seventeen was when Executive Drive traded. I think it was the year before, but we could easily say that. I'm going to say sixteen, but I'm not sure of the, it's in that corridor. But again, the the fact that, again, I I've been in meetings, and let's not forget, Clarion went through a year and a half of hearings before the zoning board to get approvals. And finally, they're putting the shovel on the ground. They missed the the, they missed the cycle, then they had COVID. And again, I battled with this shopping center owner as much as anyone. But at the end of the day, they did make a substantial investment in the community. They claim that probably the market, they overpaid, but that's not our problem. At the end of the day, when you look at this, and I guess what it comes down to, and I guess that's really the analysis, Mr. Gross, if it's a ten million dollar change in the assessment, four percent is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for three years. That's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think, Councilman. And we're getting back seventy five thousand, and then you divide it by seven years. It's basically an adjustment of a hundred thousand or less a year for seven years on a, there are, I think they're the biggest, or one of the biggest taxpayers in this entire town. So you you do the math on seventy million at four percent. Their their taxes have to be well over a million dollars a year, right, Mr. Gross?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess.
And I mean, my my back of the napkin calculation, if we are going from seventy five million to sixty million in assessed value, that's a fifteen million dollar difference at four percent. That's about, is that six hundred thousand dollars less they're going to pay my?
No, no, no.
Doing that wrong?
No, no. John?
You're you're the, you know, it's about four hundred thousand on that, four hundred thousand on on ten days. But but.
But they dropped five million earlier.
Well, you 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 dropped, you have you have one year with a five million dollar decrease, and then the the following years with with an additional amount. Look, it's not, it's not an unsubstantial amount of money. My, our point is, it would have been substantial everywhere, whenever it was. If we had to go back and pay that money back and and take that money from the taxpayer, you know, through the budget process, it would cost taxpayers a lot more money.
So so and and I don't want to beat a dead horse, but, you know, Clarion is a multi-billion dollar. They're one of the most sophisticated real estate investors in the country. If they came up with an analysis in two thousand sixteen or two thousand seventeen that Essex Green is worth ninety seven million, they didn't feel like they were overpaying at that time. It's very convenient for them to say that now. I understand that you get, you know, some of the headaches done, and we settle all these years. I get it. But that just seems like a lot to me. Seventy five thousand.
I got it, I got it. Yes, we got it, Council President. If we're, again, if we want to discuss matters of litigation, which is clearly a matter of litigation, we should be in executive session. So if if a majority of the council wants to discuss it, then we can adjourn this. We can, we'll get our tax assessor to come in the executive session, we'll get our council, we'll get our appraiser, and, but I want to be very careful because it is not a basis to determine value based upon who the owner is. That would directly undercut, I know, Councilman Rutherford, you don't mean it for that purpose, but it, everything about assessments is based on value. It's not based on whether you're Warren Buffett or 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 you're Bill Rutherford or John Gross. It's based on value and and clearly baked into the settlement, and we can give you all the intricacies. Nobody's hiding anything, is that there's a challenge that we have lost many tax appeals, that they, what frustrates me about these tax appeals is they go on and on. And that's not healthy. That's not healthy from a budgetary point of view. And that's not healthy when Mr. Gross has to be told, we're on the verge of trial. And if we lose it, you're going to have to cough up a million dollars. And I say, wow, that's not, so again, I respect everything you 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 all have to make the decisions. But I just don't want to say stuff on the public record that if if we end up in litigation will be used to suggest that we had a different motive or whatnot in in deciding value.
I'm not suggesting that, and please don't misinterpret my comments.
I'm not, I'm not. I just, I don't mean to cut you off at all. I respect you fully. And I understand your points, and I fight with these people all the time. But I just want to caution that if you or any or majority of the council wants further information, you're entitled to it, and you're entitled to vote for it or vote against it. That's your prerogative. All we can do is present what we feel is in the best interest of the town. And and if you make the decision, we have not found you at all. Thank you.
And and I'll just add one last thing is, you know, this is not a decision based on, you know, what Rich Trank and John Gross got together and decided this was the best thing to do. This is, this comes from, you know, our staff professionals who, quite frankly, are not happy about, you know, perhaps they thought they were going to have an affirmative appeal, which which would have been to their, you know, what that we started off with. And now we, the reality is what what we are here, and they're recommending, you know, that that we move forward in this manner. There, you know, there, and there are professionals that we that we hire to to help us make these decisions.
I do want to confirm for you, Councilman Rutherford, because Chief Abbott has texted me, the the closing occurred in twenty sixteen. So that is obviously when that ninety seven million dollars that you referenced was paid.
Let me, thank you, Councilman Rutherford. And I see your hand up, Councilwoman Castellino. I don't know if you had a question in regard to this one. But if if the majority of the council would like to table this and have and receive further information, I I'd be happy to move that to table it.
My questions have been answered, so I'm satisfied.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah, no, no, I just wanted to add to the conversation. I'm I'm satisfied and and good and supportive of of the work that was done. I just wanted, because a lot of this comes to memory because it's my first year on the council when Clarion took over. And since that time, you know, we did lose Macy's, the anchor store. Macy's backstage is a whole nother ballgame. Macy's, the anchor store had the upper level as well. That's at vacant for all those years. One of my favorite places to go and shop, so I missed it dearly. And Radio Shack had left. one of my favorite places to go and shop, so missed it dearly, and Radio Shack had left, and quite a few other strong tenants in within that time. So I just wanted to add that to the conversation.
Thank you, thank you. Do any of my other council colleagues have any questions on this? No? Okay, Madam first.
Okay, is there a motion to approve 290-21?
Some move.
Second.
Councilwoman Casselina?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, ordinances on second and final reading, 2664-21, an ordinance of the Township of West Orange, providing for a special emergency appropriation in an amount not to exceed $500,000 to fund contractually required severance liabilities resulting from the retirement of employees in the township. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Second.
Councilwoman Casselina?
Yes.
Council Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
Are there any, this is on second reading, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this ordinance? Please raise your hand. Madam Moderator, will you let me know if anyone's raised their hands, please?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. I thought you were going to say, yes, they have. Does anyone raise their hand?
I am not seeing any hands.
Okay, any of my council colleagues have discussion questions?
No.
No? Okay.
Is there a motion to approve 2664-21?
Some move.
Some move.
Councilwoman Casselina?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
2665-21, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7 Traffic, subsection 7-32.2, restricted parking zones of the revised general ordinances of West Orange, handicap parking, 160 South Valley Road, 34 Park Terrace, 48 Liberty Street. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some move.
Second. Like stereo.
Councilwoman Casselina?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Sorry, yes.
That's okay. Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this ordinance? Please raise your hand. Madam Moderator, you'll let me know, please?
I see no hands.
Okay. Council colleagues, any discussion?
No.
Did I did I hear someone? No, Madam Moderator?
Is there a motion to?
I heard a ding too, but no, no hands.
Okay.
That was my email.
Is there a motion to approve? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, second, yeah, great.
Councilwoman Casselina?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
2666-21, an ordinance amending Chapter 25, Section 40.2 of the Revised General Ordinances of West Orange permits. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Councilwoman Casselina?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this ordinance? Please raise your hands.
I'm seeing none.
Thank you. Any discussion, council colleagues, questions?
Council President, can I just clarify something?
Yes, please.
The ding you heard was my personal email, I don't want to get the Oprah request for email, I'm not emailing council people or anyone else, it's just a notification, so I normally keep my thing on mute, I apologize.
And I thank you for that.
Yes.
I won't Oprah you, Councilman.
Okay, okay, okay. Am I supposed to not laugh right now? Okay, decorum, decorum.
Is there a motion to approve 2666-21?
Some move.
Second.
Councilwoman Casselina?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
Ordinances on first reading, that's an Oprah request coming in. 2667-21, an ordinance amending Chapter 25 of the Revised General Ordinances of West Orange, authorizing and encouraging electric vehicle supply slash service equipment, EVSE, and make-ready parking spaces. Is there?
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Casselina?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes, I I do, I do have discussion on this, I know that it's not typical for us, but it is on first reading, so for the public, this is not for the public, you can participate during second reading. But in reviewing this, and I think it's a good start, in reviewing this ordinance, and I did send the administration also an email, I I had some questions and and some concerns with respect to the actual ordinance, which is asking for encouragement as as opposed requiring. So I know that the, you know, the ordinance does read the whereas Governor Murphy signed into law on July 9, 2021, requires EVSE and make-ready parking spaces be designated as permitted accessories used in all zoning or districts, and establishes associated installation and parking requirements. And while that's a law, this ordinance is set forth to encourage but not require, and my concern is, you know, we are always striving to be a green community, and I I think that we should not encourage but require. And my second concern was when we are, when we are looking at the make-ready spaces for developments, there is a an encouragement for a level 2 EVSE and direct current fast chargers. As as Councilwoman Casselina stated earlier, she did not know how long it took to charge a vehicle.
It's a while.
Yes, so I think that there that this ordinance can stand for some revisions to require developments of, and I don't want to be arbitrary with a number, but larger developments, you know, should have a requirement to have direct fast chargers and not level 2 chargers. The other concern that I had was with respect to the completion of an application being assumed if there was no notice from within 20 days from a designee in the zoning office. That's also a concern.
What's that?
I'm sorry?
No, you're fine, I'm sorry.
Okay. You know, so I I think that there there is room for improvement in this ordinance, and like I said, if we're if that's what we want to do is be a part of the the making sure that we are meeting the emissions reductions, then up to and including, there is an, I won't name the the development in town that does have electric chargers, but often are down, and if two or more cars are parked there, one charger will go down. And there is no recourse to give an alternative to the landlord or anything that we can do to enforce that, because we don't have an ordinance with respect to that. So if for six months that landlord is receiving notification that the EV chargers are not working, there should be a requirement to replace, to repair within a certain amount of time, and followed up with enforcement thereafter, but right now, that can't happen because we don't have that in an ordinance. Those are just some of the suggestions and recommendations that I would make to this ordinance to ensure compliance and not just ask for encouragement. I'll stop there. Councilwoman Casselina, your hand up, and then Councilwoman Williams after, Councilwoman Casselina, go ahead.
Yeah, so I was so happy that we had this presentation, thank you, Councilwoman McCartney, because you brought it to the downtown last week, because I'm very, I I became very educated on this subject matter. And what I know from those DC chargers, I believe if I have the time, I may botch up the terminology, so I apologize now, was a lot of information, a very short session, but the the DC chargers are like a couple hundred thousand dollars, so they're they're quite pricey right now. Right now, the technology is extremely expensive. The company that we viewed had the the level 1 and level 2s that were very affordable, and 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 their units were were very impressive. So, you know, we really have to be careful for what we require right now with quoting numbers, and I do hear you, Council President, because I can't imagine if a bunch of people own these vehicles in one space, you know, there's very few chargers, and it takes seven, eight hours to charge your car. So, again, the technology, I'm sure, will catch up in the future, but right now, I don't see it being there. I know I could never purchase one of these vehicles right now with my lifestyle, and I think it's for, you know, people who, they they equated it to having a cell phone, like how you would charge your cell phone, whenever you can get some cell charge time, you would. It was very educational, the presentation, because it wasn't a sales rep. They sent their their tech person to talk to us, which is always a mistake, because the salesperson definitely gives you a prettier picture, but I was very appreciative of the tech person getting to pick his brain and getting a lot of great information about this topic. So I didn't get a chance to really dig deep into this, because it was on first reading, but I hear you, but again, with the technology, the way it is right now, and the expense of it, we're going to have to, you know, have a discussion about that, to see if it's feasible right now. But 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 again, great start, so we we some, this is where we have to start, so that's all, that's what I just want to add. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams, and then Mr. Trink, after, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to add, you know, that most of us have a very ordinary lifestyle, and as it relates to electric vehicles, if you have a very rudimentary lifestyle or regimented where you know where you're going, and you know what points you need to recharge, or exactly what your route is, then an electric vehicle is certainly optional and a way to go. But as I have, you know, recently had an interruption in in my day-to-day activities and my lifestyle, as it had reexisted, and now have had to travel, while I had thought an electric vehicle would be suitable to my lifestyle, my work environment, I have now done a little bit of more research and education. And so I am very understanding of where we are as a municipality in making a strong recommendation, but I would be a little hesitant in making it a municipal requirement or obligation to finance charging stations at this time, and only because, as I'm traveling, you know, what I'm seeing is every municipality doesn't have the funding to to create these type of charging stations. And so as you're traveling through through different states, through different townships, what happens is if you don't have a place to charge, basically, you're SOL, and you have to know that as you are traveling, or or, you know, going about your way. So right now, I I would just be a little hesitant in obligating the municipality to to have available the necessary dollars to create charging stations, even three years ago, or two years ago, as a two years ago, because I have to keep in mind, we're in COVID, and time is just, you know, irrelevant, sometimes hard to measure. But two years ago, right before COVID, a family approached me and was like, where can I charge? And the only place available in West Orange was the Edison parking lot, but it's closed, you know, not during their open hours. That's a that's because those things are expensive to maintain. And so I would just caution us against being over-exuberant and making this a municipal obligation as opposed to something we encourage, just because of the financing right now. Technology is very expensive.
Mr., thank you, Councilwoman, Mr. Trink?
Well, again, I want to thank the Zoning Board of Justament Chair, Phil Neuer, who brought this to my attention. This is, as you said at the outset, you know, part of the governor's enacted law. So so this is not aimed at a municipal obligation, this is aimed at that if there's going to be a new development, that the developer basically is going to have this as one of their, we'll call it utilities, so that people who do buy electric vehicles will have that access, as you're suggesting, Councilwoman Williams. So so again, what what my my recommendation would be, and I think, Council President, you said it correctly, this is kind of the minimum that Stan State mandated, this would in the normal course, because this is a chapter 25, will go to the planning board. So I think some of the points you make about, you know, repairs and enforcement and fast chargers, again, I think we could give that all to the planning board, ask them to review that and any other issues they have, because they'll be the ones who, when a a land use application comes before them, they're the ones who are going to require to see these EV chargers on the plants, they're going to be the ones who kind of enforce it. So I think that's why Chapter 25 ordinances go to them before they come back to you on second reading. So if if it is okay, because number one, I think we're required to now have this, whether it's on the books or not, this is the minimum, so now I would suggest we ask the planning board to to review all of this for whether there should be more in it, and and some of the points you've mentioned, Council President, and any other member of the public, and then hopefully, when it comes back on second reading, some of those points can be fine-tuned. I don't think any of them would represent substantial changes, I don't think anything in here is, you know, designed to do anything other than, you know, for instance, if when the Highlands comes in, which will be sometime next year, for the 400 units that they're approved, certainly, I would think we would all agree that there will be a percentage of the people there who currently will have EV electric vehicles, and certainly, over the lifespan of that project, there'll be more and more people, so that that would be something that I would think the planning board would want to have guidance on and require.
Yeah, I I certainly like that suggestion, I know that it is in our master plan, when I went back and revisited the master plan, it's in there at least nine different times when we amended it in 2019, so I am happy to see this, but also, you make a good point where this does go back to the planning board, and they can have a discussion about, you know, other other matters. So I appreciate that that input, thank you, Mr. Trink. Councilwoman McCartney, and then Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President, I'm going to pick up right where Mr. Trink left off, because we saw with recent applications on the planning board, Central Avenue, Joe Alpert, the redevelopment there, added electric charging stations to that application, and And we saw during the application of, during the hearing of Executive Drive, they went from four stations to 15. So as rich as Mr. Trank just said, when, if and when West Essex Highlands come in, we would definitely, and the word is encouraged, because that's what, yes, we would like to mandate that, but the word is encouraged, because we are seeing more and more of this. And as Councilwoman Castellino said, it, what we were finding during the presentations that the Environmental Commission we have been having and sharing, that it take, most of the parking spaces, they take eight hours. So they're charging overnight. Council President, I do like the remark you made, and I don't know if we can add this now, that we do have an electric car, so we depend on, it needs to be charged, just as Councilwoman Castellino said, it's like your phone. You have to keep it charged to use it, and owners of electric vehicles know that. So when you said that there should be something in there, that the repair time, if you have, if this is a residential complex, that the residents would depend on that being there. We were at the zoo, the holiday lights, just this weekend, and the county had four charging stations. Now they're up to eight, which is really 16, they're double, and everyone was full. So here, we thought that we would be there for the day, you know, to charge, and every, every one of them is full. And it does take a long time. So I do like that one addition there about, you know, I know that people depend on them and that there should be a quick turnaround on having the stations maintained properly.
Definitely a quality of life issue too, because I mean, like, you know, Councilwoman Williams said, yeah, she realized that her lifestyle wouldn't allow for them because of the time that it takes, but happy to have happy to have the planning board look at it and go over that. Thank you for that.
I'm going to keep that in mind.
Thank you. Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, thank you, Council President. My comment is very brief. I think the two things, one, I do think we should require, I don't know what the metric will be, but we should require certain number based on either number of occupants or number of parking spots. We know that this is the future. Whatever we do now will probably have to be revisited within the next 10 or 20 years. But I do think we can make a strong statement as to how green we are in West Orange and what we expect from development in West Orange going forward by requiring, you know, a substantial number. And I don't, you know, substantial is a, it means different things to different people, but a substantial number of charging stations. And then I, you know, this is just to make sure it's on the record. I understand that the cost may be significant. And I don't own an electric vehicle, so I don't know how they recoup that, but I would imagine that there is a charge for folks that are charging their vehicle at a public station. No, there's no cost. You get to charge it for free?
No, no, there is. So like the turtleback, the parking lot, the parking deck, you get two hours free. If you're charging overnight, it's $10. So depending on how long beyond the free two hours, you are paying. But, you know, I mean, people who own electric vehicles aren't, you know, paying for gas, so I'm sure $10 is.
All right, thank you. That was it for me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino. You're muted.
Just to add to the conversation from our, from the presentation last week, because my mindset when we were discussing these chargers, do we put them in our municipal lot? So why people, you know, may be going to a restaurant, and that's where the conversation came in at the length of time. So at least if you go shopping, it could be an hour or two. So just trying to find out, you know, figure out different placements for locations. But you, and I was shocked to hear that after 50 miles, you need to charge your car, you know, seven, eight hours. So like I said, for me, that wouldn't work out with, because I'm a salesperson and I'm on the road a lot. But it was just very interesting just to get educated on this and to see where we could have placement. I did ask a question, what was, what's the number one use for municipalities with the charging stations that purchase them? And the answer was airports. So I said, well, we don't have one of them yet, so. So it was a great presentation, learned a lot. So look forward to the future, how we could assist our residents.
I will, I will, I will thank you. I will add that Maplewood at the Lee had a police vehicle that they, it's an electric vehicle that they have purchased. It's not a transport vehicle, so it's only for administrative use. But that battery gets eight hours, a 12-hour shift. It'll last a 12-hour shift. We can't afford things like that here.
You have to get a fire truck first.
An EV, an EV has to be for transport, not for just administrative use. But it was really, I like that they, you know, that they're moving in that direction. It's just, there are a lot of unknowns still with with that type of vehicle for the municipality, right? So we'll watch Maplewood, see how they're going and what their costs and expenses are as we move in the space too. But certainly appreciate the conversation and the dialogue. And thank you, Councilwoman McCartney, as I know that, you know, as our liaison to the planning board, that you'll have that discussion as well, so.
I'm trying to look up also, Council President, I appreciate the comment that Mr. Rutherford just said about is there a regulation on the number of stations per unit? So that is something that I will, I don't see that. I was trying to find it now, but I will continue to look for that.
Yeah, so the ordinance talks about a percentage, but I think even moving forward, if you can with the planning board, address that just in more layman's terms and add the actual math, like the number of vehicles. I think that that would be great. Thank you all so very much for the conversation. Madam Clark?
Ordinance 2668-21 and ordinance amending and supplementing chapter 25 land use regulations, section 25-29, stormwater control in subsections 25-29.1 through 25 point, I'm sorry, 25-29.13 of the revised general ordinances of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading? Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Oh, Council.
Lenny is still here.
Just a request, if we could get a red line version of, because this is a large ordinance and with multiple pages, and I just want to see what we revised. That would be helpful for second reading. Thank you.
Will do.
Thank you.
Lenny's on. Can we, Len, can you talk about the differences?
Well, I don't know the specific differences. What I will do, what I will tell you is that we're obligated to pass this model ordinance as prepared by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. This relates to stormwater management regulations that apply to all land use applications and specifically all major developments as defined by this ordinance, which is any project that disturbs more than an acre of land or creates more than a quarter acre of impervious coverage. So there isn't necessarily a lot of latitude to change this ordinance unless you want to make it stricter. However, making it more stricter is going to just increase costs to implement it on behalf of any property owner. So this meets the minimum requirements that the state has. There is a substantial amount of language similar to this in the current ordinance. I chose not to go through line by line, but in essence to say, we're repealing the existing ordinance, which again was required by the state back about 15 years ago, and now replacing it with this current ordinance, which is also required by the state. And they're following federal guidelines from the Federal Clean Water Act. This DEP is charged with with developing regulations throughout the state and for municipalities to comply with the Federal Clean Water Act. So this is the state's model ordinance, which we're obligated to follow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lapore. Councilwoman Castellino, your hand is still up. Did you have additional questions?
Yeah, for Mr. Lapore.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so you said over an acre and then pervious coverage on a quarter of an acre property?
Yeah, any, any, any project that disturbs over an acre or creates more than a quarter acre of impervious coverage is subject to this regulation. Now, most existing residential properties in town aren't usually an acre, so if somebody has a vacant lot, is typically does not cover such a development of a project like that. So on the other hand, the West Essex Highlands is going to be subject to these regulations, because they're going to disturb well over an acre and create far more in excess of a quarter acre of impervious coverage.
Okay, so I guess my question is for the smaller properties, where how they come into play, because you're repealing the old ordinance and without seeing the red line. Well, if you're repealing, you repeal it. So we had a situation, I'm sure my colleagues and the chief Abbott's on the phone, where we had a particular property in town that was on a smaller parcel that had covered it with concrete for a for recreational purposes or the entire backyard. I won't get into that right now, but Mr. Trank knows the property that I was talking, referencing to. So I guess my, and we were able to prevent the activity that was happening because of the pervious coverage on that property. So now, are you repealing that? I just want you to be mindful of smaller properties that do, you know, that break that, that was breaking the old ordinance. So do we have that safety mechanism in this?
Yeah, this is not changing the bulk regulations, meaning it's not changing yard setbacks. It's not changing lot areas. It's not changing minimum building or maximum building coverage or maximum impervious coverage. Those are still land use regulations, which are not affected by stormwater management regulations at all. What this is simply, what this is saying is, if you're developing a parcel and you're going to disturb more than one acre of land, or you're going to create more than a quarter acre of impervious coverage, these are the regulations you must follow. If somebody has a 50% impervious lot coverage in the zone they're in, and they decide they want to, they're going to go ahead and and cover 75% of the property, that's still a violation of the ordinance. It may not even trigger the, the application of this ordinance.
Okay, I just want to make sure we had that protection in play for the
Not, not changing both requirements. This is strictly for stormwater management.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. So, Mr. Lapore, I wanted to ask though, when we do have applications before planning or zoning, we are in compliance with our ordinance, but are we also in compliance with DEP regulations as well?
Well, no.
Because, you know, I have been trying to promote enhanced stormwater regulations, and I guess that has not been adopted by the DEP yet.
Unless there, unless your enhanced ordinances or requirements follow this, then it wouldn't be adopted. We have ordinances in place that are very substantial ordinances for stormwater management of the type of development that I talked about, over an acre of disturbance or a quarter acre of impervious. These are revisions that the state has made to the model ordinance, which as a municipality in the state, we're obligated to pass this ordinance.
Yeah, it does, it tightens it up, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from my council colleagues?
Ordinance 2669-21, bond ordinance providing for the installation of a sanitary sewage system and associated laterals located on Mellon Avenue between Cleveland Terrace and Kitchener Avenue in the township of West Orange appropriating $160,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $152,000 bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the cost thereof and directing a portion of the special assessment of the cost thereof. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading? Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney? Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Do any of my colleagues have any discussion or questions at this time? Okay. Madam Clark?
Pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
We do have an executive session, so I'm going to ask my council colleagues if they have any pending matters that they want to bring up. We can do that now and then. Councilwoman Castellino and then Councilwoman Williams, I'm sorry.
I'm going to make mine real quick. This is more for administration and my colleagues if they want to comment to it. The first is, I had asked, I talked to the chief in the past. There are smoking ordinance. I wanted to add in the, mainly for the parks and you can't, right now, smoke cigarettes in the parks, tobacco, any tobacco products. I wanted to add the marijuana to that. And I'm getting complaints, you know, there's kids in the park, which they're not supposed to be smoking under 21 years old. Sometimes there are people that are in our parks that are in their twenties. And, you know, we could ticket them, just like if somebody's smoking a cigarette on school property, we also have that ordinance as well. So I think we should add the marijuana to that, just as a public awareness, even though it's been legalized. You know, there isn't any smoking in our parks. So I would like for legal to look at that and to get support on that. And then my second item is is, as we know, you know, plastic bags, just to inform you, you know, the plastic, the ban on plastic bags is coming this May from the state and Swayson or PR firm that we work with the downtown and also covers some of the township items, sent us a note, going to sit down with Ms. Brill, and I had asked Councilwoman McCartney, because the environmental side of it, just to get, start getting some information out to the business owners, knowing that this is coming and it's going to be regulated. The Public Relations Commission, we're going to be working on getting bags out. We want to get them to the seniors. So just want to get the awareness out there that this is coming. So it'll be here quick. So we have to make sure the township is prepared. So Swayson will help us with the thought-out plan. I'm going to work with, of course, with Joe Fagan on that as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. Hold on one second, Councilwoman Williams. I think that Councilman, I'm sorry. Mr. Gross, your hand went up when Councilwoman started speaking. Did you have anything, a comment to her comment?
Yes, I just wanted to let the council know, let Councilwoman Castellino and the council know that we've all, we have also identified that as an issue within our ordinance, that the, our ordinances about not smoking are not generic. They're very specific. So we've actually already created and are vetting an ordinance to present to you at the next meeting or first meeting in January, because I don't think we can split over the year, but but we have, we already have an ordinance. We're looking it over, assuming that it touches all the bases. We'll have before you the first opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Gross, and thank you to the chief too. I'd asked him a while ago to work on that. Did we lose the council president? Did we lose the council president?
Yes, I think she dropped off.
Yeah, that just happened to me. It's, it's like I completely blacked out.
Yeah. We all did at that time.
Well, well, while she's gone, if, if I can just piggyback on that same marijuana in the parks issue. Council President and I were present at a workshop last week at the League of Municipalities where they spoke about how municipalities can regulate marijuana usage in, you know, parks or other right of ways. I, I don't know if our smoking ordinance covers sidewalks. I know in our marijuana ordinance, we are prohibiting it on sidewalks. Apparently if we don't also prohibit cigarette or tobacco smoke on sidewalks, we'll be out of compliance with the state statute. So we have to adjust one or the other, and I would be in favor of no tobacco on sidewalks so that we'll have no tobacco, no marijuana on sidewalks as well. I don't know if you guys have already taken that into consideration or not.
It, it's under discussion.
Council President had a power failure. Oh, there she is.
The whole thing is enforcement too. So we could pass these ordinances and Mr. Gross, I hope when they're presented that we, you know, there's a plan for enforcement as well.
Well, of course.
I'm sorry.
I just, I'm sorry. I just wanted to apologize. I had a power failure, so I didn't go off camera because I wanted to, just.
We figured.
Obviously, all enforcement has to be, we have to try to, we have to be consistent in, in our enforcement and, you know, however, with what we have now, there's relatively no enforcement because we don't have the ability to enforce.
Yeah.
So at, at the very least, you know, there, you know, our law enforcement officials have some level of, of judgment that they can use. And right now they, they have no judgment because we're not giving them the power to do that. So that's our, I think whatever we present to you will be with the intent to, to using it consistently and, and wisely. So.
So can I, I know that I missed out on, on a part of that conversation, but are we talking about the enforcement for smoking on, in public areas? Is that, that's why?
Sidewalks, on street sidewalks. So the, the statement that Councilwoman Castellino made is that if we address public smoking of cannabis on sidewalks, the ordinance requires or the state requires, not the ordinance, the state requires that we be consistent in smoking anything. So if we are going to have a concern with eliminating cannabis smoking on sidewalks, then that would mean nicotine, cigarettes, everything.
Yeah.
And so what I wanted to, to say, if I have the, if you're finished, I don't want to interrupt you. So let's see who has the floor, Council President.
Are you, are you, are you finished, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah, I, just, just, just so you all know what my recommendation was, was, was to, you know, in regards to enforcement was to, you know, you may start off with a fine, a small fine and the second offense would be much larger, but a ticket would have to be issued. Go ahead, Councilwoman, that, just so you have the whole picture of what I had put on the table.
So I just, this, this is one of the things in Councilman Rutherford, I don't know if you spoke already, but this is when we attended the workshop at the league, this is one of the challenges that municipalities are facing because of the Clean Air Act, right? It's really a federal legislation. But there is no, there's no recourse for imposing fines until the third offense. So even if it's a minor, right? So there's, there's different levels, right? So it's an initial warning with notice to parents and then, you know, that, that can be had, but we do have to have that discussion as well. Thank you for bringing that up. Councilwoman Williams.
Yeah, so I, to your point, Councilwoman, I just wanted to, to say this is one of those areas where unfortunately as far as a municipality and regulating this issue, certainly we must be consistent in how we regulate smoking of any product. So if we're going to regulate smoking of cannabis on sidewalks, certainly that has to apply for nicotine products as well. So my concern would be first of all that you cannot smoke nicotine products in most restaurants. That's illegal now. And so most people then do come outside who smoke to smoke on the sidewalk. So if you take that thought process even further, while you don't want people smoking cannabis on the sidewalk or whatever have you, again, that would be a, a concern for those who have as a reprieve to go onto the sidewalk and smoke nicotine. That would provide an inconsistency. My secondary concern with that would be enforcement. And, and as we know, anything, you know, is discretionary. So we want to be mindful that we don't want small offenses of something as smoking on the sidewalk to be one of those occasions where it, it can be, you know, discretionary. You charge some, you charge, don't charge all. So I, I just want to be mindful before we go down that road as a municipality that, that quite frankly, that should be something in my opinion that we're led by the state, not by the municipality.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Does that conclude your comments?
Indeed.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCartney and then Mr. Gross.
I think Mr. Gross is going to follow up on this. I had a different comment.
Okay, Mr. Gross?
Yeah, just, just to add that what I mentioned that it was that we were discussing that particular issue and, and we are, we understand the dilemma of, that, that imposes. So we're not, we're, while we're prepared to tell you that we're going to bring, bring an ordinance before you for your consideration, what the administration's recommendation on this is yet to be determined, but we are certainly mindful of, of the dilemmas that, that you're talking about. And certainly we will address it or, or if, if not, explain why we won't, why we don't recommend.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you. I don't have that ordinance in front of me right now. I do support that, but it seemed to me that you couldn't smoke 30 feet away from a building. Was that, do you recall that? Was that the case in our ordinance?
I forget.
I know, I don't, I didn't know that conversation was coming up, but I felt like there were already stipulations in there on what can and cannot be done with smoking.
Certainly, something for us too. And I'll pull that, that ordinance as well because I'm not very familiar with it, but definitely we'll pull it so we can have that discussion.
What I wanted to say was thank you to Councilwoman Castellino about, I had mentioned this in my council liaison announcements about working with the Public Relations Commission and Downtown Alliance. And Swayze has done an outstanding job on the Downtown Alliance marketing. And I shared a lot of information already with the Downtown Alliance from ANJAC, the Association of New Jersey Environmental Commissions, and from New Jersey Clean Communities about the single use of plastic. So I again, look forward to having those discussions and helping not only the residents, but the business owners, community at large, understand the implications of this new bill.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino, your hand is still up?
Yeah, I have a quick question being that we were on the topic of the marijuana. The micro, when we put micro business in the ordinance to maybe my understanding, if I remember this correctly, those are for small, those are for our residents only, for West Orange residents only?
Well, it's not for just West Orange. There is a priorities for women, women owned, veterans, people of color, people who have been, are in marginalized communities where they've been greatly impacted by that. There is a residency requirement, however.
Yeah, that's what my understanding, like it would be for residents to have the micro businesses. So someone from another town wouldn't be able to open a micro business here. They would have to open it in their town?
No, they could open it here. I mean, typically what, what, what would happen in that case?
How many are we going to have then? That's what I, I thought it was just for.
Well, I, I can't, I can't answer that. We, we should have this discussion and I have to get a meeting back on for us. I canceled the last one over.
I apologize, but I received a phone call and I, I, my understanding was, and shame on me, that I thought it was just for West Orange.
So typically, so typically what will happen is that there will be one partner that is a resident of West Orange and that will qualify someone to come in. But, you know, there's also the conditional licenses that, that give priority to marginalized communities, women, veterans, women of color, people who have been, like I said, impacted criminally by this.
Yeah, I'm just worried about the total number that we're going to have in the township. That's but you all know that anyway.
Have we identified, Council President, if I may?
Yeah.
It's my understanding, and I just want to be clear because obviously all of us get calls constantly about what is to be in West Orange as well as the zoning department being inundated with calls from those inside and outside our community. I certainly am calling saying, hey, what are we doing? What's going on? But she's like, I can't tell you anything more than I tell the other people that call because we don't have anything in place. So to that point, you know, I just want to reiterate that while we have approved the use of cannabis in the township of West Orange, we have not identified conditions. And so that is yet to be determined by the task force that has been identified, implemented and is in place exactly what those, or how that ordinance will come out into play, the specifics. So at this point, we don't know, and while it is permissible per ordinance, we may decide that of the six type of license categories, we may not honor all of them. Is that correct or is that not correct? We, we may decide to, to not have them.
It, it all depends on what applications we get. And to your point, the task force has been working on it and our legal department has drafted a revised ordinance as well as bylaws. However, the last task, the last task force meeting unfortunately had to be canceled because dealing with the residents and we were all there and we have not been able to, with the league and, and just people traveling and stuff have not been able to get back together.
One of the concerns that I've been addressed since we're talking about this, and I'll go ahead and put this on record, is for December 15th, we have an imminent deadline, right? For those who are interested in cultivation, applications will be submitted to the state for those.
They'll be, they'll be released on the 15th.
The applications, yes. The process starts. So those people who are interested in cultivation need to start submitting their applications. But the way our ordinance is written, you need municipal permission.
So, so since the time, and I'm sorry to cut you off, but since the time that we, we put our ordinance together, there have been some regulation changes. So things, like I said, Mark Moon has already drafted an ordinance, but as soon as everybody is able to get back in a meeting, and that should happen right after the holidays, well aware of the December 15th deadline, that is for cultivation only, just for members of the public to be aware. For all other businesses, it is still, all other licenses, it is still March. But for cultivation, December 15th is the application release.
While we have our, while we have
But we have, so we have a draft application already. There, there is a whole list of things that we have already completed. It's just a matter of everybody approving them. I don't know, Councilwoman Castellino, have you, have you been on the Google Doc to look at the stuff that's in there? There is a draft application completed. And one of the things that we learned at the league when we went to the workshop is that there is going to be some things that we have to add in our application because of the regulations that have just recently been updated again. So it's, we're working on it. We will hopefully have it done right after these holidays in time for, you know, for us to start accepting applications. So the ordinance, like I said, it's already drafted. I hope to have it, you know, have everybody on the task force look at it and then it'll be before council in December.
But, but, and, and I'm only articulating this for clarity because, you know, we're, we're each as elected officials addressed by residents on the application process. So I, I wanted to be extremely transparent that right now, as a council, as a municipality, we are not ready to approve.
We do not, no, we are not ready to approve applications now.
Right. So I, I think that's most important for me, for us to be
As it is for us.
And transparent that the, the township of West Orange as a municipality is not prepared to, to review those applications and the likelihood of the December 15th opening process, we may not be ready. So I
I can't, I can't say that that is the case. So to be clear, the application is in draft form, waiting for the task force to look at it. And we did not find out until this, this past week, like I said, at the league, that the December 15th was the cultivation deadline. We were working on a March deadline. However, to put out an RFA or request for applications, that's a matter of putting that together with the legal department. Like I said, the application is in draft form. So it's not unforeseeable that we don't, that we wouldn't be ready for a December 15th release date. All of the things are there. It's, everyone has to jump on and check it and we will hopefully be ready.
Yeah, they need to come back before the council for
To approve an application.
Yeah, we do, yeah.
Not the application. I mean, it's, it's a general application and a request for applications. Once we start getting completed applications, the task force will look at them, then it'll come back before the council. But
The task force has reviewability before it even approaches the council? Is that the way we have?
Yes, because the, the task force will make recommendations as to, as to what is suitable and what fills in all the blanks and the council will have last approval. Similar process to the ABC board. That's the process that we use for the ABC board. Yes, Councilwoman Castellino?
I'm sorry, is Councilwoman Williams done?
I am. At this moment, yes, yes.
So we were discussing as a council to raise the license fee. Does that have to appear on the application? So we never discussed it as a council, how much that would be.
That's in the ordinance already. What I wanted to amend in
You were going to raise it.
But yeah, well, I wanted a sliding scale and also to include the annual renewal fee in there. But yes, that, that has to be changed.
But that should be, and I'm going to go to, well, does Madam Clerk get involved with this at all? It works like the ABC board. So as far as, you, you don't get any of this, Madam Clerk, at all, like as far as with the licensing?
Mr. Sayers? Mr. Sayers, you need to mute, please.
Excuse me?
You need to please mute.
Yeah, you're not on mute.
Oh, I'm
That's okay. So you, okay, so I just wanted to know, because I don't want somebody to start applying and we're going to raise the fees and
It'll be done before the applications and the request for applications are out.
Okay, but that would have to be the next meeting because once are we in the 14th?
Yes.
So if we're going to raise any fees and, and to make the application, wouldn't we have to prove something on the 14th?
That's done by ordinance, so that won't be possible.
Right, that's, that's my point. We're not ready. So that
Again, to we're not To your, to your point, we were not aware that the December 15th was a different deadline for the cultivation.
I'm not asking if we were aware.
We will, we will be, we will be, we will be ready to receive applications as soon as possible.
As soon as possible is different, Madam.
Okay, so I, I, I hear you. I hear you. And I don't know how many times I'm going to repeat it. We just found out that the December 15th was a different deadline than the one we were working on. Because we just found out, we will work to get it done sooner than, than December 15th, if we are able to. If not, we will report back to the council. At this point, having to repeat the same thing over and over again does not help us get to executive session any quicker. So I'm going to move the, I, I hear your concern. It is not ready. We will have a meeting and I will let you all know when that meeting is and what the status of, of that meeting is then. know when that meeting is and what the status of, of that meeting is then. So, unless we have anything, well, you did have something else that you wanted to discuss, Councilwoman Williams?
I did, and, and so, as we segue into that, I wanted to discuss preliminarily and bring to my colleagues' attention extending the redevelopment zone for Main Street to White Street. So, right now, we have a redevelopment zone that doesn't extend the borders to that parameter, and while we have considered at the last council meeting extending that footprint to the left, I just wanted to bring up for consideration, certainly we need to find out the plausibility of that, if it is advantageous to us as a municipality, but I wanted to bring that forward for consideration, since we are looking at the footprint of what that downtown redevelopment zone looks like, to just get some feedback and preliminary discussion on extending that to White Street.
Councilman Rutherford, I see your hand.
Thank you, Council President. So, Councilwoman Williams brings up a very good point. We are reimagining downtown. I know that there's a process that we would have to go through to expand the zone, or maybe create a different zone, and I'm not exactly sure, you know, how or when we would start that, but I do think that is the right thing to do. It is clear that our Main Street corridor will need to be redone from Eagle Rock Avenue to Northfield Avenue, and even the current zone that we have. In our last council meeting, I asked the question about whether or not the other side of Columbia Street is included in the zone. There's a fencing company on the corner of Wachung and Columbia that I don't believe is in the zone, so there's, and it makes no sense to have that type of a business there with the kinds of, the concepts that we're, we're discussing for our downtown. So, you know, it's a one-touch philosophy. You do things right the first time, you don't have to do them again. So, I am certainly supportive of looking at the entire area. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. I also think it's, it's an interesting concept. I encourage Councilwoman Williams to check with Planner. I don't see how, I, I think, I understand increasing the footprint. I just don't see how White Street would be qualified for the criteria that's there, so that's why I think it's interesting to investigate. There are viable businesses, plenty of residential apartments there, so I think it would be interesting to investigate. I would be curious to learn if it qualifies for that redevelopment area.
So, would that require a study by Paul Greigle? Is that, what would be next up? So, then the.
It would have to be a recommendation.
I, Council President, again, we'd have to, you're absolutely right, have a study. We have done the last few studies by Susan Gruel, as you will recall, so why don't I, if I understand the geographical areas that people want, what Mr. Gross and I speak in the morning, and we'll try to get a proposal, and again, as Councilwoman McCartney is referring to, obviously, in the end, has to meet the criteria, have planning board hearings, and then come back with a recommendation, but the first step would be to get a proposal, to do the investigation, and then for the town council to, to refer it to the planning board.
Okay. I think that sounds, it sounds like most of us are supportive of that. So, if you could have that conversation with Mr. Gross, that would be.
Sure.
A start. Thank you. And I think that's all we have. We do have executive session, so.
Need a motion to go into executive session.
Are we gonna, are we, are we gonna come back? I'm sorry, Councilwoman, are we gonna come back, or no? There's nothing else to come back for, so let's just adjourn and go into executive session.
I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And go into executive session. No further business after executive session. It will be handled by the council.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Very happy Thanksgiving.